Call please.
Mayor Kenos.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Here.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Here.
Is the mayor?
Here.
Notice of this meeting was provided to the Burnsville News, The Courier-News, and The Star-Ledger. Filed with the municipal clerk and posted on the municipal bulletin board on January 3rd, 2020. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the review of justice for all.
All right, first on the agenda is a proclamation that I will read for 2020 National Nutrition Month. Whereas food is the substance by which life is sustained, and whereas the tight quality and amount of food that individuals consume each day plays a vital role in their overall health and physical fitness, and whereas there is a need for continuing nutrition education and a wide-scale effort to enhance healthy eating practices, now therefore I, Mary Jane Kenos, Mayor of Burnsville, New Jersey, do hereby proclaim the month of March National Nutrition Month in Burnsville, New Jersey. And I encourage all citizens to join the campaign and become concerned about their nutrition and the nutrition of others in the hope of achieving optimum health for both today and tomorrow. And I proudly enter this proclamation into the public record of the borough of Burnsville on this ninth day of March, 2020. So, and now we have Allison Sanderson from, who is our Shop Right food expert, nutrition expert, and you hear her voice when you walk around Shop Right?
I know, I'm everywhere.
No, it's good.
The mood tonight is crazy, everyone. Stocking up for, like, you know, coronavirus. So hi, everybody. I'm Ally. I'm the dietitian at the Burnsville Shop Right. Happy National Nutrition Month. Thank you so much for your proclamation. The theme for this year's National Nutrition Month is called Fight, Fight, Fight. Basically what it's doing is it's encouraging people to make small changes, little bits here and there that will add up to be, you know, more substantial in terms of political importance over time. Or something drastic that you can't really fit into your lifestyle. So anywhere you can choose a little bit more fiber, some fruits and vegetables, some water, vitamins C, and just try to make the best choices you can for this National Nutrition Month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does Shop Right have any programs going on, or are you doing stuff over there?
Sure. So I have a March Into Wellness event coming up towards the end of March on Saturday, the 21st. We're gonna have some samples, some coupons, raffle baskets, just ways to kind of help you implement a lot of the nutrition topics you might hear about through the media, your doctors. But my job as a dietitian is to help you implement them and make them easy, easy to detect into your lifestyle.
And people can stop and see you in, what are your hours that you're there in your office?
They're all over the place. They're five days a week. All the nutrition services I offer through Shop Right are completely free. So whether it's a consultation, or can you help shopping, I can take your shopping list with you and walk through the aisles and help you compare labels, you know, look at budgets with circular, try to help make healthy eating a sustainable thing for your family.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much. I have breakfast one this year, the first couple of ones all involve dark chocolate.
Whoa.
Please take some common times water. See you shopping.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sally.
Will we be able to take a photo real quick with the?
Sure. A photo with the proclamation?
Who has the best phone? Your phone?
Good thing she took that.
Yeah.
Photo.
Thank you so much. Do you want to sign this or can you give it to her, or will you keep it?
You can, yeah, I can sign it.
You can do that, and then where you can hang it up or put it on your office door. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Sally.
Have a great day, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, too. Oh, well. At this point, we will have an open session, so we welcome comments from members of the public. Please, we have our timer, so please try and keep your comments to three minutes so that everyone gets a chance to share. Come up to the microphone and just say your name and where you live. So anyone from the public wish to be heard. Joe Hannah?
I'm here tonight because I read Dave DePodlin's letter in the newspaper. It spurred on again the concerns that some of us in town have had about putting fertilizer, pesticides, herbicides on our fields or lawn or municipal property. So I would like to request that you postpone your resolution until I can meet with the Environmental Commission and other interested people who might want to provide some questions. I have some now. I have some opinions that I would like to express to you all and see how we could resolve this in a way other than, than doing this. If you can, I can speak to it now. This is why I'm, I'm so concerned about it. He's absolutely right, DePodlin, in being concerned about our watersheds. But I would like to bring it right home to us. And I did a lot of, spent a lot of time today researching chemicals that are used in lawn care, but I decided that that's not a good approach. I'm not a chemist. I'd have a hard time convincing you about some of the things. So I decide, I also know that scare tactics or being didactic does not work if you want to influence people. And I do want to influence members of the sport. So what I prefer to do is give you some of my insights, my perceptions. And I'm gonna leave you with questions. I know a lot of you do very well on researching on your smartphones. I've observed it. And I'm hoping between now and the time you really make this decision, I will have had some influence on you. My biggest concern is that I well know, can't be an advocate for the environment without knowing that there are things you have to weigh. You can't do away with worldwide pesticides because you will have starvation. However, when you just consider our town, our small town, and that's what I'm concerned about. I'm always concerned about regions. I do think about regions, but without, I'm just concerned about our children and our town. I don't see that you can weigh greener grass with the risk that there is. And there's, and there's definitely concern about if you read all of those sheets, so if they're five to seven sheets, the last thing they do is a disclaimer. And I'm not gonna go into it, but what they say is, "Other safety measures in addition to those indicated may be required." And that says a whole lot. Anyhow, children's physiology is different from adults. They're not just little. You just don't take one-third of their body weight when you have a medicine. They have different circulatory things. They have different amounts of nose hair. So they don't use children to test in laboratories. They use adults. What adults will absorb in their skin is different, what children do. One more thing, I realize that I'm gonna run out of time. The big issue is, when you weigh greener grass, it does not take away anything from all of the positive things about sports, any adult or pet outside use on our municipal property. None of that is deleted. It could all be there. It has really no real connect. You could have lawns that are mowed close, or turf that's mowed close. It could be weeds. Children don't have to have turf that's on golf courses. There's some rumors out there that it affects our selling of our houses. That's not an argument. That doesn't make sense. Lots of things have people buy or not buy in Burnsville. It certainly isn't how green the grass is. So I realize I'm over time, and before I'm pushed off. I do have a lot of feelings about this. I'm gonna share it with people on my EC, and I'm hoping that we can brainstorm. I'd like to know if it's a cost issue, is it a Works Department issue? I need to know more about it. So I'm going to be inviting people to the EC so that I can come prepared to really try to convince you. I really think it's up to this board, because you have the power. We're supposed to, the EC, to educate, but you really, I have no power. You do, and you can make a difference. You could be saying something very important to the community. Because I don't think people really realize that there is a risk, and it's a risk to our children, and we don't know the answers. Thank you, Travis. Thank you. Sure.
I'm just a little confused when you say you want to convince us. You want to convince us of?
Oh, to, to?
No pesticides, or?
That's right. To not, oh, I'm sorry.
My understanding is that the Integrated Pest Management Program looks for the, I mean, is going for the safest.
Toxic, it says, yeah.
So are you, you want to come back with a proposal for zero, or?
I do want to come back to zero. I absolutely do. I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear. Yeah, I don't think that any fertilizer, and I think it's necessary. Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? How about Tom?
So my name is Tom. I live at 30 Chestnut Avenue here in Burnsville. I was here two weeks ago. I'm here for just two very quick points. You won't have to put the timer on. So one is up to here two weeks ago. I just wanted to express my appreciation. I believe you're going to vote tonight for the potential paving up one loose section of Chestnut. I think that's on the docket for tonight. So I just wanted to come up again and express my thanks for, for you folks for considering that. We were hoping to get it done last year, but that didn't happen, so hopefully it'll go through. The second thing I just want to mention is, on Thursday, this is the Second Annual Fundraiser. Is it okay to say something? Yes. So we're having a fundraiser. It's Bedwell HSI. So last year, it was Design Your Own Ice Cream. And the children at Bedwell created flavors, 75 contestants last year, 130 this year. We picked the two flavors, and how it works is tomorrow, the two winners come to the store with their parents, and they make the ice cream with me. And then on Thursday, that's the big night, and that's why I just want to let you know. So Thursday, we will have what we're calling the Secret Scoopers, which are basically all the teachers at Bedwell. And they're going to be on half-hour shifts from 4:30 to 9:00. They'll be scooping the ice cream. The flavors are bubblegum and pieces of cake. Those are the two that won. And the proceeds for that night go back to the HSI. Last year, we don't, I think we wrote a check for 900, and I'm hoping that we're going to exceed that on Thursday. So if you're around and you'd like to stop by for some homemade ice cream, the place should be hopping on Thursday night.
That's great.
I missed it. Where was it?
Oh, I'm sorry. Penguin Ice Cream.
Penguin, Penguin.
Yes, I'm sorry. That's it.
All right.
Okay, thank you so much.
It was bubblegum and pieces of what?
Cake.
Oh, pieces of cake. It's cut-up brownies with hot fudge swirled in our vanilla bean ice cream. And the other one's bubblegum.
I'm calling for that one.
Yes, okay.
No calories for that.
Any questions on, on the two little points I made?
No, that's great. Thank you.
No, okay. All right, thanks so much.
Anyone else wish to be heard?
Watch out. I've been thinking again.
Uh-oh.
You know what that means? Hi, how are you? Hi, council. Hi, mayor.
Hello.
I'm here to-
The time's running low.
4:30 to 9:00. Sorry, sorry.
Bedwell parents know. I applaud your pursuit of the Recreation and Open Space Master Plans and the overall strategic plan that I know you're all working really hard on. I know you have a lot on your plate, but I've been thinking about the Open Space Master Plan and the Strategic Plan, and I wanted to share my thoughts with you. I was out speaking with some neighbors in Twin Lakes within the last couple of weeks, some long-term residents and also some young parents. And we got to talking about how great it would be to have a bicycle and walking path linking Burnsville and Far Hills Borough. We all know that Meadowbrook Farm is a really important piece of that puzzle going forward, but right now I was thinking about points west or southbound on 202. The older residents who live opposite me on 202 said that when their boys were young, they could ride an ATV from Meeker Road all the way to, all the way to the train station in Far Hills on a path right along the river. Last year, I took a little hike, maybe we could do it together one day. I know you like to hike, along the right-of-way for JC P&amp;L and the railroad. And I went from Meeker Road to White Knack Road. And if it were mowed, it would be passable, like, right now. There is that big lump. I don't know why on Meeker Road, but that could be, that could be smooth. Mind Brook Greenway has been in the plans for Somerset County for a long time, and we already own some land that we could use to, to start to get this going. We've got open space at the base of Charlotte Hill that was saved when those houses were put on smaller lots. And we also have open space at the corner of White Knack and 202, where the old Mind Brook Railroad Station used to be, you know, ages and ages ago. Far Hills has green acres land. I'm not sure how big the parcel is, but you can see the sign right as you cross the railroad tracks on 202. And that land could be utilized. I also know that there is a, a landowner that owns land right from Liberty Corner Road all the way back to White Knack, right in that area. It's a big farm, and it stretches all the way back to the first two houses on Old Mind Brook Road. Why do I think we should do this now? Because Far Hills is about to put in a really big development of affordable houses and market-rate homes on 30 acres right at Lake Road. That developer did such an amazing job rebuilding from the studs out the Far Hills Center landmark building. Just, it's absolutely beautiful what he did down there. I'm sure everybody's seen it. And so I think, given the amount of care he put in on that project, he would be amenable to possibly talking about a path on his property at Lake Road. And so I think we should go with something either along the roadway but off the roadbed, or something deeper in the woods. But I just thought that this would be an opportune time to start to talk to Far Hills about that and loop in Mr. Malillo and see. Thanks, everybody.
Can I ask a question, Carrie?
Yeah.
So are we thinking like a natural path, a paved path?
Well, you know, money's, money's gonna be, money is, is never no object for us. So I think for, I, I just don't, I don't really even know where the, where the path would lie. I don't know what the best route would be. I'd be more than willing to help as the process goes along. I think ultimately, it would be ideal to have like a cinder track. So that it would be assessed, it would be much more handicap assessment, more usable. That might take a really long time. It is a long-term project. But I just think that eventually it could be the cornerstone of the community that I know you guys are trying to build.
Now, the properties you're talking about, they're all contiguous. I'm trying to picture in my head your, picture your painting, but.
They're not, they're not contiguous. There's, there's one that runs along the base of the entire Charlotte Hill Development. That belongs to us. And it backs right up onto JC P&amp;L and New Jersey Transit Land, which is flat, as, you know, they always are. They haven't gotten much grain. If you walk along by the tracks, which is doable, there's a farm and a fence, and then you get to White Knack. And if you cross White Knack Road, the piece of woods that's right on the, on the far side of White Knack belongs to us.
Okay.
And has for a long time.
It's not really developable for a field.
Yeah, it's, it would be, you know, it, you'd have to take some down the trees.
I know we're looking for, I don't want to say smaller projects, but projects that can make an impact quickly.
Right.
Maybe it's just, I don't know if it's on brand-sitters list or not.
We didn't, we haven't started that yet. Would you like to be on the steering committee?
The steering committee for what?
Congratulations.
For the Comprehensive Recreation Plan. I'm just putting that together now.
I'd love to.
And you sound like a perfect person to be on that. Because we'll, you'll be meeting with the planner to talk about ideas for what kinds of things. Send me the details, and I'll be there.
I mean, I know, I know you've often advocated for having connections between Morristown. I think it's a, it's a great idea.
Yeah, and it's in the county's plan. It's just, you know, it's called the Mind Brook Greenway, and they've always wanted to do it. And I'm thinking if we make a little bit of headway on our, and you know, talk to the mayor and say, hey, let's see if we can find a way to do it, because it would be fantastic for everybody.
And it could be a thing where you're paving a piece of it and maybe part of it's gravel.
Right, exactly. And it could start off as being, as being rough and ready in some areas, and then as we get funding or people get excited. It's been proven that if you live along a path like that, it adds to the value of your property.
The county has a bike hike-walk agenda, I think. I know they've mapped out a couple of.
No, that's it. That's the.
Every time I see when I'm on, on the river road bike trail, walking my dog, it said 2,000 more miles, and that was probably in 2000. So they probably don't have it. And here, we've got some miles here and, and some willing people that are interested in making a difference in the two towns. I think between us, we could probably get something done with Morristown.
Yeah, I think the cinder is a good idea, because otherwise it's all putting people with small kids to mobility issues. It's, it makes a huge difference, I think.
It does.
And then they, so just enjoy me.
It could be like a linear naderar. And once you got your bike to the other end, you wouldn't be far from that, and you'd be, we've got the farm in the middle here, but, you know, we're gonna work on that.
If there was a path, I'd ride down to Far Hills, just for coffee and come back for the after.
Yeah, exactly.
There's no safe way to ride from here to Far Hills.
No, and, and it's also very hilly. You can't put kids on there.
No, it is. Thank you.
All right.
I ride it, so don't hit me.
Thank you. Good ideas. Anyone else from the public? All right, let's start work. Go on to these four resolutions. 2078. We're not going to move. Anyone want to move it? No. 2079?
I'll move 2079.
Yeah, I'll second.
Roll call on 2079.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. Merritt?
Yes.
2080. And these are, what these are is approving the, the funding to appropriate the money for some of the planned road projects. So that's what we're working on here.
I'll move 2080.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mr. Merritt?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Okay, 2081. Nope, it's been moved. Okay. So, which then we go on to the ordinances that match up with these resolutions.
Actually, the first one is different, huh?
Oh, yeah, actually, this is different. Okay, this is our, part of what we do each year is the budget process. So I will open the public hearing on ordinance 2020-1834, the ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on this? And basically, this just allows us, in the case of an emergency, if we have to exceed, and if we don't go, if there's some ways that we don't spend money, it can be banked for future use, for one year. So far, we haven't ever used it, but it's kind of a safety net. So I will close the public hearing. Tom, you want to move that?
I'll move to pass ordinance 2020-1834 on final reading and adopt as published. I'll second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yep.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Ms. Merritt?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm not gonna open the public hearing on this bond ordinance, because we did not appropriate the fund. So we will skip that one, and we'll go down to, I'll open the public hearing on ordinance 2020-1836, the bond ordinance appropriating $961,000 and authorizing the issuance of $915,000 bonds or notes of the borough for various improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the borough of Burnsville in the county of Somerset, New Jersey. And what this one is doing is spending the rest of the $10,000, $10 million bond that was approved in a referendum by the public for road improvement. So this is the end of it. We've been slowly using that $10 million, and this would be the, the last piece of it. Anyone from the public wish to be heard? Okay. Bonds, go ahead. You go, Kay.
I'll move to pass ordinance 2020-1836 on final reading and adopt as published.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Merritt?
Epstein.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Okay, I will open the public hearing on ordinance 2020-1837, bond ordinance appropriating $200,000 and authorizing the issuance of $190,000 bonds or notes of the borough for various improvements or purposes authorized to be undertaken by the borough of Burnsville in the county of Somerset, New Jersey. And this is for capital projects that we've had in the budget?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, okay. Anyone from the public wish to be heard on this? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Do you want to do that one again?
I'll move to pass ordinance 2020-1837 on final reading and adopt as published.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Donahue?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Ms. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Day?
Yes.
Ms. Merritt?
Epstein.
Okay, I am not gonna open the public hearing on ordinance 2020-1838, because we did not approve appropriating the funds. And that was an additional 1.2 million beyond what we had already had in the referendum, so. Okay. The next is for the library doors. Who's our library person? You are, yes?
I move the ordinance 2020-1839 appropriating the sum of $75,000 for the purchase and installation of library doors be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law. That a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at 7:00 PM, Monday, March 23, 2020.
I'll second.
Any comments? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We now have resolutions 2082 through 2095, and we are pulling off 2090. Because they're waiting for.
80 minutes and 90 got pulled, right?
I just have 20, oh, 2090.
2090 was the number.
Yeah, because they don't have, we don't have the DDP permit yet for that.
The IPM got pulled, didn't it?
Which one?
The IPM.
Um, 2089.
Yeah, we're gonna take that off, too.
Because the Environmental Commission meets this week.
Wants to comment on it.
And the Public Works, we meet on the 17th, so that way we can do a full investigation of, you know, all of our options and how this would affect us.
Okay.
And what we can do and can't do. So I'm hoping that with both the Environmental Commission and the Public Works kind of getting everyone's feedback on it, then we can move forward. But I know some people are concerned about pre-emergents. Pre-emergents, just to clarify, is for crabgrass, right? And has nothing to do with grubs, so just to clarify, we still have time for that.
Well, but last, last month, we approved doing this. So this is, this is what we're doing until we change it again.
What's that?
Whatever, what was the resolution last month?
Synthetic on the blank fields and organic on the public common areas.
Yeah, that's what we approved last.
But it doesn't start until after the next meeting, but. So what you're saying is if we do any IPM, you want it to be effective for 2021?
No, I mean, this, this could work with IPM, depending on what IPM comes up with.
Well, part of the issue, too, is like, IPM requires a lot more monitoring. So in other words, if you suspect that there's damage to a field, you actually investigate to see if it's grubs or crabgrass or whatever the case may be, so, before you treat it. So you're not treating for something that doesn't exist.
That's not there, right. That makes sense.
So I think that's a smart move either way.
Right, like, IPM really puts a plan in place.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So the idea that you're gonna come back after Public Works and Environmental Commission meets and with that specific plan?
Let's hope so, yes.
Can I respectfully request that we include some additional residents?
Of course, yeah.
Either the Environmental Commission and concerned residents? Because it seems like very one-sided in, you know, in one direction, rather than getting a full understanding from residents.
Yeah, anyone who's concerned about the fields is welcome.
Yeah, but concerned, I think, is even the wrong word, because I think it puts a negative connotation out there. And it's, yeah, it's people that actually that have a vested interest in, in what's there.
I think we all do. I have a vested interest in what's there.
Yeah, I think, I think there's a lot more people than the Environmental Commission only and Public Works.
I know, I know.
So, yeah, that's what I'm saying. How do we make it a little more inclusive?
Oh, I see what you mean. Well, the EC meetings has a public session, right?
They do.
Yeah, it's on the calendar, so that's the Environmental Commission.
Do they publish their agendas as well? Maybe we can, I don't know how we get the word out to people.
They should be on the calendar. They're all meeting. They're all on the calendar.
But not the agenda. Just the meetings, but not the agenda. Right, if they don't know we're talking about this and.
Oh, right.
If they don't normally go.
Are you suggesting that we have a whole, are you suggesting that we need a town meeting where a lot of people come? Is that it's open more than it was the January meeting?
Yeah, not necessarily a town meeting, but just marketing to get the word out, so that we get, you know, a good understanding of the residents, rather than a small group.
Well, it's not a, it's not an adversity. Or you'd want people for that, or you, maybe people that are using the field on a regular basis to have their input. That's right.
Like the school teams.
Yeah. The workroom, do you want another, be a different meeting?
I just, we, be careful that we're not taking a.
Yeah, I mean.
I, I'd like to follow a process. We, this came up last time, this happened too. So like, in the past, the process is, we go to our advisory committees, we get the advisory committees to report out. The public come to the council meetings, and the public can sort of be pro, against, they can have comments, they can say whatever they want. My understanding is the process is, we get advice from our advisory committees.
Right.
So, I, I think, you know, let's follow the process. If the process is that, that we're going to.
So who would be the, would the rec committee have that?
Invite the general public to come to the committee meetings, then we have to be careful, now we're gonna open that up for everything now, you know?
Actually, yeah. Which committees?
No, I'm with you, Tom. I don't think this should be, so, but I, what committees are the right ones? Probably the rec committee.
Which committees? It should be rec too.
Health, Department of Health.
Sure. I think getting input from the committees is fine, that, that's.
Yeah, when's the Department of Health last time, I think?
Yeah.
Board of Health.
Board of Health, yes, sorry, thank you.
We're talking about the Department of Health a lot.
Just to be sure, I mean, we passed an approved approach, so we can have these conversations, but we're not gonna use that as a vehicle not to do what we approved to do last time we met, so, I mean. We've gotta move forward with the pre-emergence and, you know, because have these conversations concurrently, but, you know, it's not gonna be a way of upending what we just did.
I think different groups are gonna look at it from different perspectives, and so.
I agree.
I think we, I think we skipped the process of getting input from the committees previously, when we passed the last resolution.
It's been passed, so.
It has been passed, that's true, but we, we kind of did the process out of order. If I'm familiar with what I've been told, and we brought other things forward, is we ask the committees for their input, the committees bring the input, they do analysis, they do a deeper dive, so that the, so that the council isn't spending hours debating these things, and that we get the input from the committees. Now, we seem to have gone back to front on this particular one. John, so I don't think we should, you know, go in and say, you know, it's not appropriate to get input from the committees.
No, we can get input, but just, I don't wanna not do anything because we're getting input, because it was, it was discussed in a vote.
Well, I don't think we're not, we're not, not doing anything.
As we done this one.
My understanding is that we're, we're moving forward with what we have, and if something, if we come up with something better, then we, my understanding from the last meeting with this, then we could, then we could intervene, we could change it.
Or we could modify it, or define, better define what we're doing.
Can I just make one addition too? The uh, the email today from Doug said that he was going to um invite Russ Olson from TruGreen, who does our property maintenance now, to come to the council meeting, so. The council meetings are open, and that would probably be a good time for any, any interested parties to come to the council meeting.
Yeah, and ask him directly.
Especially if Russ is here, because.
Yeah, I'm with.
I personally don't disagree with Christine that there's a long-term framework that needs to be established.
Right.
Um, but I agree completely with, with you. Uh, that, so let's figure which committees this goes to.
Yeah.
And when it spits back out, we'll have the normal process, and in my opinion, it's rec, it's health, it's probably EC, those are probably the three that have a stakeholder.
And Public Works.
Public Works.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Does, is there someone on EC from rec? Yeah, right?
Uh, no.
Oh.
No, I, I think it needs, just like any other ordinance, it has relevance, it should be reviewed and passed forward.
No, on your face.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think Russ is coming to the seventeen, Public Works.
Oh, I'm sorry, so Russ is coming to our Public Works meeting?
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay.
But um.
When is that, on the seventeen? So it'll be before our next meeting anyway?
Before our next meeting, and maybe I'll.
Yeah, I think it'll just help us maybe get a better perspective, or have a clearer plan. So that, you know, we make the best of both worlds.
Yeah, I think it could wind up to be determined that some of the things we are spending on, or have been spending on, aren't necessary, and.
Right.
I'm looking at it from all angles.
Okay. So we will refer that to those committees?
Yeah.
Alright.
Can I have a poll, moving on, twenty ninety-two, it's got a question about that.
I've got, before we get to ninety-two, eighty-three?
Wait a minute, where are we, eighty-two?
Um, twenty eighty-three? This is just a general, and I don't see Doug in the room or John. I, I know by law, we are required to take the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jack, the low bid on these types of items.
I agree.
Low is qualified.
It's really hard to put somebody that's not qualified.
Well, so, but what, what I wanna make sure, and I guess Ralph, you're the, you're the responsible party, cause I see the other ones in the, in the room. Um, some of these bids, and, and a lot of these, these grouped together for me, they're dramatically different from the low bid to the high bid, which I understand is normal. But I wanna make sure that through the selection process, the RFP process, that the, what they're supposed to do is clearly outlined. So that way, we're not feeding into a loophole, a change order loophole, and that they clearly understand that we, we believe as a council, this is what they're going to do. And I don't wanna hear in three months, oh, well, wait, no, really, we need to have a thirty thousand or change order that gets them back in the other category.
The lawn thing, there were only four bidders. I think you're thinking about the roads.
I was, the lawn, the roads, it's all the same comment. On eighty-three, ninety-one, um, ninety. I mean, especially in, in this, in the circumstances of low road, there are bids that are twice as much as the low bid. So, I just wanna make sure we don't create a problem here for ourselves.
Well, and a lot of it, the bids are based, everybody gets a bid packet with all the specs, so they're supposed to be bidding on the specs that have been defined in the, in the bid package, so.
There's checklists.
Yeah.
We have a process, there's checklists at the time of the bid opening, and everything's gotta be checked, so if you'd like to see those, those specs.
I don't need to see them, I just wanna make, I've always been wary of, of taking a low bid in everything I've done in my professional life. The low bid is always the guy that thinks to myself, let me get the job, and then I'm gonna give you a change order in three weeks. I just wanna make sure that I'm speaking clearly. If they come back with a change order that should be understood, I'm gonna say no.
What's the threshold for change orders? Isn't there a threshold that you have, or something?
We, for us, was three.
Twenty percent.
Twenty percent?
Yeah.
It's a general.
They can't go beyond forty percent.
Twenty percent over?
Of what's of the project, of what their, their bid.
Not supposed to go over twenty percent, it's a general.
Right, right. Yeah.
So they get a free pass at twenty percent of ninety-one thousand dollars?
And you're supposed to improve it in.
We get to see it.
In advance, in advance.
If it was more than three thousand dollars.
Except for minor field modifications.
Right, not field modifications, I'm with you.
Yeah.
I mean, it has to pass through our people here, just, I'm pretty sure they do, we can do the due diligence, so it's usually an equitable process.
And when, when the bids are opened, each of the bidders can look at each other's bids. And, which they do very often, cause sometimes there are new people and, you know, who've never bid on a public project before.
Tell you to get thrown out.
And, yeah, and they're always shocked when they see, you know, what other people bid, and it's a, it's kind of a game they all play, they all kinda know who's doing what. But it's the state law, so that's what we do, I know.
And I have a quick question on ninety-nine-one, if we're.
Uh, do we finish the other way now? Just wanna make sure.
Yeah, well, you were ninety-two, right?
Oh, ninety-two.
Oh, yeah, you were ninety-two. Ninety-two was.
Well, that's a lot of.
The snack lines is the, is the, the uh. We only got one dinner.
We only got one bid, so that would concern me, because I actually thought, we're asking not very much, we're only asking five hundred dollars to give them that, that franchise. Is it characteristic for us to only get one bid on this, as a pass?
We've had a hard time finding people.
We had a hard time finding somebody who wants to do it.
Yeah. We always have had a hard time finding. He's been there, how many years has he been there?
It could be a much bigger source of revenue, for sure.
Yeah.
John used to bid it every year, get no bids, and then you have to reach out and find people. He found this particular vendor. Do we have any idea why it's such an unattractive thing to bid upon?
It's such a short season, I think that's why.
I mean, even for, even for the local snack shacks, I mean, at the games, I mean, I'll speak for football, as the prior treasurer, we made over a thousand dollars for four home games. Just doing it ourselves and going to Costco and buying food and then selling it. So, I mean, and it's not like, you know, crazy markups either.
Right. Do we set the fee, or is that what he bid? Or do we have a minimum amount that you have to bid?
I don't think we do have a minimum. I don't think we have a minimum here, that's.
He's been the only vendor for years?
So that's what, maybe we should set a minimum in, in next time?
Has the fee changed in the years? No.
No.
How many years?
We only have, we're so ancient.
Up at least two percent, president.
I'm personally throwing this into the whole rec reevaluation piece. This is all part of it.
I'm sure.
But these happen over the next twelve months.
Can we, can we vote on this one separately, rather than with the whole package?
Um, yeah, I mean, if, we can always throw out the bid, right?
What do you think?
Can we reject the bid?
I think we're giving it away.
I think we're giving it away too. But I don't, I don't think you have, I don't think. In my opinion, I, I agree, I think we're giving it away, but I'm gonna, I lump all these decisions in the same category.
I understand.
The turf, if we kill it now.
You sat in the same meeting.
If we kill, if we kill it now, there's no snack shack this summer, and I think that hurts the pool.
Pretty much, yeah, I think you're right.
And I, I think we put it in the category, look, I don't agree with it, I don't think it's necessary, it may not be the right choice.
Why do we say that we don't think, you know, maybe it's all a matter of which we advertise the RFP. I mean, there are pools that are going out of business, and the people who are servicing those pools may be looking for, you know, for venues. Why do we, why are we saying that in March, that it's a, it's.
It's not gonna work?
Nothing, not gonna work.
What is the pull-up, on May thirty-first?
There, yeah.
Yeah.
There, there was um, there was discussion at the rec committee about just the vendor um, concept in general for the snack shack, because um, some of the committee members were proposing that we, you know, ha- have, allow families to come and barbecue and, you know, bring their own food and spend, you know, to kind of like promote being there for longer hours. And one of the oppositions to that was that the vendor might not like that, because then their sales go down if they bring their own food, so they're not allowed to bring food in for those reasons. So, I, I hear you saying it might hurt the pool, but it could also help the pool from the other perspective.
One thing, I mean, the mayor pointed out that, you know, these bid information is, is, is public knowledge, it's available to anybody who's interested in bidding. If somebody was interested in, you know, bidding a thousand or two thousand dollars for the pool contract, the snack contract, they would have been able to see that it was five hundred dollars last year, it was five hundred dollars the prior year. So, I don't know, I mean, unless we're not advertising.
That's one wonder, are we even advertising it?
Yeah, this is, this is formally bid. This is a bidding process.
You have to put it in the paper, you have to do that.
Okay, yeah. So, I, I don't, you know, I'm just saying, maybe, maybe it certainly seems logical to me that there'd be people out there wanting to pay a higher price, but I just wonder where they've been, because it's not a secret what this is going for, you know?
I mean, I know what the baseball snack shack makes, just being open the limited times that it is. Five hundred dollars doesn't seem like a whole lot.
It does not have.
Well, I don't know where it was advertised either. I mean, uh.
Wait, what is our, our.
Was advertised in the Burnsville News only, or was it advertised in Town and Pool?
No.
To Town and Pool, Jack.
I bit it up.
No, I think, I, I believe our official newspapers are The Ledger, The Courier, and the Burnsville News, yes? That we.
That's correct.
And that's where we, that's where we publish.
Do we know what other towns do?
But if we wanna be aggressive and go out and find, you know, if we wanna make changes, is that the place where the people who do this type of business look? Are they, you know, are they looking in The Star Ledger for this type of opportunity, or are they looking somewhere else within their own trade publications, for example?
And I don't know if this is a service that many people ask for, right? Maybe the towns, other towns that have pools, maybe they usually run their own. Rather than farming it out, so maybe there's not a big market for this, and so people aren't even looking.
To Councilwoman McCreedy's earlier point though, I mean, maybe we'd be smarter this year to let this go and then open up, say, to families, you can bring food if you want, bring a cooler, you know, because maybe that makes the pool more attractive, maybe we'd sell more memberships that way. You know, and maybe that's the better route, is to make it more attractive than to say to people, whatever you do, don't bring a juice box for your kids, because we wanna make sure the snack shacks.
Yeah, if we're giving it to them, basically.
Right, in other words, if we're gonna let, if we're gonna let the contract go through, maybe we should, in hand and hand and peril, change the policy. If families wanna bring their own food, let them do it. And this guy can compete for business then.
And if the vendor wants to compete and have more attractive food, and more variety.
Exactly, yeah.
I'd like to vote, vote on this separately.
I don't know, I think, I think the value for us is five hundred bucks, but the value that people go to the pool, it's a nice amenity, and I'm gonna look for it.
It is.
I think it's a bit late in the game to sort of like.
Well, it's late in the game, but it feels like it's late in the game. It feels like it's late in the game.
It feels like it's late in the game. Yeah, I think, I know my kids go to the ice cream, the chicken fingers, I think they want.
I, I, I don't wanna have nothing.
And I think.
They just have apples.
But I wanna, let's have the families be able to bring what they want.
Yeah.
I, I think, uh.
It's a value.
My, my understanding is that people.
Or chicken, or chicken fingers, it doesn't matter.
My understanding is that people complain about the quality of the stretch I can pull.
As they line up for it.
Well, maybe so, but you know, this is an opportunity to make it better, and I think if we, we can be an enabler, and we'll have the same opportunity, a conversation next year, I think, at some point.
We're gonna hold a campaign.
I think I agree with Tom, that it's kinda late in the game, and we're also in the middle of, you know, losing our rec director and hiring a new one, and so whose whose shoulders is this gonna fall on to hustle somebody out there and find somebody else? So. I think, you know, to your point, we should definitely, this is on the list for next year, and, you know, we redo this bid, we either make it more at least have a baseline, you know, it's gotta be at least a thousand dollars a bid, and but I just, I'm, I'm nervous about not doing it for this year, I think we're too late, but.
I don't disagree with what Tom said, though, that opening it up for people to bring their own food.
Yes, and changing the policy, yeah.
Yeah, let the families bring their food, let them bring a cooler, you know?
And if the swim team wants to have a barbecue, they should have every right to have a family barbecue.
And.
So, if, if we're voting on twenty ninety-two, is that with the provision, that we will accept their bid, but they need to know that we're allowing people to bring food in?
Yes.
I'm okay with that. Is that something we can write in, Jack?
Yes, I think you can, actually, I think you can do by cancel our motion to change the rule, so that people can bring outside food.
Yeah, I don't even know if it's written anywhere. Is it officially written somewhere, or is it just kind of in what they've allowed, you know?
I can follow up with you, cause I have a copy of their policies that they're about to update. It's on the meeting, it's on the agenda for tomorrow. They're talking about the update, so.
Ralph or Gina, are there any downstream consequences of this decision that we're not considering?
Well, I was gonna suggest that it goes back to the rec committee if we follow the process. I hear Tom. Before we, like, kind of, then we're superseding them, if you will, so. And unintended consequences are, they would know better than us.
We could pass it the way Jack's suggesting, and then, and then kind of, you know, pass it back to the committee. I know it's out of order, but, you know, just in the, in the.
What we're doing is, we're gonna, we're gonna have the amended policy to consider.
Yeah.
To consider, so then what if they don't, what if they say, no, we're not changing that policy? Is that okay?
They convince us, they convince us not to, then. Yeah, just that they convince us not to.
Well, Mike, can I ask a question? If he placed his bid to pay the five hundred dollars If he placed his bid to pay the five hundred dollars with thinking that the current policy's in place and then we change it, does that give him the right to withdraw his bid?
Probably.
Let's hit the material change.
It's been practice, I know. I don't know if it's written or not.
Is it in, do I? I think it was just.
I think we have time.
I think we have time, too.
I don't think it's, it's not written in here, I don't think.
I'm just looking to see when the bid was.
If it's not written policy, then we're not changing anything.
It actually says barbecue grills are available in the picnic area.
We put this off, bids were received on March third, so we have sixteen days to go to decide.
Oh, so plenty of time.
But, uh, Councilwoman McCready is saying that it's not even, it's not even written down that we don't allow people to bring food. That's not, in fact, it even says that they can, they can grill using our grills.
Yeah, and it, it says food and beverages are allowed in designated areas only. No food allowed on any of the decked areas other than the picnic table, but it doesn't say.
I think we're safe to just move ahead.
Unless it says in the actual bid document that they have sold.
Yeah, that could be where it is, but, you know, access to, I don't know.
Without seeing the bid packet, I don't know if there's anything in there that gives them exclusive rights.
Yeah, it's not in the packet.
It may have just been past practice.
Yeah, I think it is.
Well, can we pull this then and have it reconsidered, reconsidered in two weeks? Would that make a difference in that way, rec can come back and tell us what the bid was?
No, I mean, Gina's saying that, that, that it's not in there. There's nothing in there that says they can't have food. In fact, it says they can have food.
I thought you were saying that there was a different document that was, that was the actual bid.
Yes, that's what Jack's looking at.
There is a bid document.
You have the packet, it's on the, it was in the bid specs.
Oh, you don't know what was in the specs, okay, so maybe that'll give, if we put it off for two weeks, it gives us time to look at the bid specs and make sure that we're not violating.
The bids were up on March third, so we have until, you know.
Okay.
Just not to involve the lawyers, but maybe we should check with the JF to make sure there's not some objection that we wouldn't otherwise be not aware of. You know, you got maybe charcoal, gas, I mean, it's, you got flames involved, so it's, you know, seems de minimis to me, but insurance companies have different views on things sometimes.
Especially in my comment.
The, the grill stuff's already in there.
Oh, no, but, but, you know, we, we have the grills, but if this is a JF and the objection to it, because it'd be probably, I would think, effective.
If we already have them, what?
Probably hasn't been visited, revisited, I would expect in a long time.
I don't know, we've always had grills there.
Yeah, it says only these grills are allowed for cooking. Actually, I think they took the grills out.
Yeah, did they take them out?
I think they did, I think I recall this coming up at the rec committee meeting, too.
Okay.
I think they said they.
Because they're rusting, unused.
Yeah.
Well, even if there were no grills, people wanna bring a cooler, they wanna bring a bunch of sandwiches, they should be able to.
I don't think they've ever had a problem with that. I think the biggest, the problem came up with the swim team wanting to have events and, and have it catered by somebody else, like bring in a Minuteman to do a barbecue. And that's when, you know, he got upset and said, no, we don't want it.
Well, you know, we're talking about.
I think a team event should be an exception.
Yeah, I think so, too. You know what Uber eats now, because, you know, you can always just order it in.
I was just gonna say that.
That's even services are under.
So, why don't we do this, we'll put, we'll pull this off, um, Gina, you'll take it to rec tomorrow.
Yep.
Tell them what our thoughts are on this and we'll revisit it on the twenty-third.
We should certainly allow the, the, the team events to be an exception.
Yes.
I think, we asked the rec their input on that, but I think that would should be a direct question. Team events, under any circumstances, team events are an exception. And then, we wanna, I think we wanna allow everybody to bring their food if they want to.
Yeah, I don't think that's ever.
Not only team events, what if the pool wanted to do some kind of a catered fundraiser there that was above and beyond chicken fingers?
Yeah, well, and they used to do that, we used, there used to be a, an adult night.
An adult slum, yeah?
Where they wouldn't have, no, it was like a dance, they'd have food, they'd have a DJ, they'd have catered food.
The fire and police company, I don't think they.
Well, they do the, the night, what do you call it?
National Night Out.
National Night Out, the snack bar was open, that was the only.
That was it.
No, there was, there was other, there was, uh.
The Lions Club this year gave out hot dogs.
Hot dogs, yeah.
But I know in years past, when I first started, I was asked not to have food.
Yeah.
I think we should be able to do what we want at our pool.
Yeah.
When the Bedwell pool party and the middle of the pool party, they bring a grill and they grill.
Yes, we take the Kiwanis Grill. We bring the Kiwanis, the girl from Kiwanis down to the.
But aren't they, like, preseason, it's, the pool isn't open to the public, yeah, yeah. Okay, so, okay, so let them know how, what our opinions are on that. So, we're pulling off ninety-two. Okay, I think Christine, or who else had a question on one of these?
I did, I, I just had, um, a question on, well, ninety, I know it's not going, but ninety and ninety-one, the, um, these budget amounts, how, what's the difference between the appropriation and the bids? Do we know?
Between the appropriation and the bid?
Yeah, so the, these, the, these were appropriated as bonds, right, earlier?
Correct.
Or at least approved from a budgetary perspective, what's the difference between?
There, they, the difference is, is less than what we have there at the moment, at what was, um, the low bid was. But I don't know what the exact amount was, I don't have that documented.
Yeah, because they, they did come in under budget, both of them, so.
Well, that, that money is always captured, right? There may be some change orders, two, three percent, there might be small infield changes that are three, less than three thousand dollars. But at the end, when the project finishes, and if it comes in even one dollar or a thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars below, that money is recaptured and reused in the budget, is that right?
Tom, I have your.
Either goes to fund balance or gets recaptured.
I have your document in front, is it on here?
No, that's a different, that's, that's different.
No, um, or.
So, I think what she's, I'm sorry. Do you wanna say what you're referring to?
Yeah, I'm just trying, I just wanted to know what the difference was, to, to your exact point, what you were explaining, is that it goes back in. I just was wondering what the real difference was, that's all, it's not a huge deal.
Yeah, or the same, if you, Ralph, I don't know if that's accurate, so if it, if they were under, um, the budgeted amount and it comes in even lower than budget, or say, uh, the, the bid is already a hundred thousand dollars lower, could you then add another road in with that money that wasn't named in the, in the, in the budget?
Yes, yes, you can, if, if, as long as it's within the same ordinance, if the, the road is, is there, that money's available, that money can also be canceled from the ordinance and regenerated to buy, you know, a, a truck.
Right.
It, it's, if it goes back into the capital improvement fund or back into the fund balance of, of the capital fund balance and then re-appropriated in any way that you see fit. If it's another road and, and comes under the various changes, so that's always put at the end of the thing, then another road.
Yeah, because we've done that in the past, haven't we?
We've always.
I mean, we've gotten to do a couple extra roads than we planned.
We did it last year, we did it the year before.
So, some of the roads.
For example, last year, which road did we, were we able to do, using the same strategy?
Mount Harmony.
Mount Harmony Road, yeah.
Okay.
And, um, to, to the mayor's point, I think the low bid in the case of Hall and Lindaberry gives us about a hundred thousand dollars a headroom. When the project's finished, it, you know, there may be some change orders, as you noted, there may be some change orders. We may not get the full, the full difference between the low bid and what was originally appropriated, but, you know, we should recapture, you know, whatever the difference, ultimate difference is at the end.
And I'm hoping, and I know that this is part of the language, it was approved under the, the respend of, of the remaining of the ten-year bond, that there's appropriate prioritization that happens within the money that's available.
Yep.
Yes.
On those roads and the discretion's by the DPW to make sure that they prioritize.
But that also comes before the government's buy rate.
Right, yeah.
So, how do we?
I should send that today, Chad, just so you.
How do we protect ourselves, um, um, change orders that aren't, let me, let me go backwards. Let's just say, I'm making up a number here, but let's just say we authorize by ordinance of one million dollars and the bid comes in at nine hundred thousand, so it's a hundred thousand less. Now, the, now the vendor knows that, now, you know, it's public knowledge. What, what protects us from them, all of a sudden we get a change order for another hundred thousand dollars? Because he's thinking, I could have more money.
That's what the, that, that's the responsibility of the engineer. They have to review and justify every change order. So, it can't, you know, it's gotta be something that was either pre-existent, you know, something they weren't aware of or the, we weren't aware of, they open up the road and find, oh, you know, there's a, an extra issue with the drainage. So, it's really, it's, it falls on the engineer.
It, it falls on our professionals, both ours in-house and our engineer. And if it's not, if that, if they don't pass that test through them, then it doesn't come to you.
But I know the contractor wouldn't know the engineer's estimate, because it's not an ordinance appropriating the money.
That's correct.
It's usually three or four roads lumped together or more, uh, so, the contractor or the bidder's not gonna necessarily know.
What your, what your budget is, yeah.
How would they, how would they not know, this is, this is a public meeting.
Yeah, I mean, they can look it up online, no, can't they?
No, no, it's not online, it's an internal document.
That's correct.
And it's probably not operable because it's, it's intra-agency.
I'm lost now.
Because, because the ordinance, let me see, let me see if I'm, this, this is a correct assumption. Because the ordinance that had money for this particular project also included monies for other projects. So, when anybody looks at it from the outside, they can't see what we, what our engineer estimate was for that road. They just see what our engineer estimates are for all the roads that are part of the ordinance that we passed.
So, that's what protects us, that these ordinances actually are for multiple projects.
Correct, yes.
And the engineer's estimate's basically the root product, but it's public, not internal.
So, if somebody, but you're allowed to ask for the bid summary, but, but that bottom line would not be on there, the engineer's estimate. If somebody requested that list, you wouldn't give them the estimate.
No, they, they all, they all look at, they're here.
No, yeah, but they never.
There's always a representative from, from the company that's here, so they hear all the bids, they take their own notes and they know.
Yeah, but I've had, you know, some of the, um, construction publications will call and say, you know, I wanna see the list of bidders and how much they bid. So, you would give them that information, like, what this list is that we're looking at, but you don't put the, the estimate. So, they can, that is all operable, but not the.
It's all after the fact.
Right.
If you see that bid, that point is probably no right.
Right.
That's correct.
But to your point, Dr. Hammond, I mean, Hall and Lindaberry is two roads, right? So, they can surmise if they're certain people, which I'm sure they are.
This, this, and it's Jeff, by the way, but okay.
I like saying doctor.
Uh, so, okay, we ready with this?
One more thing before we move on. Remember, one legitimate reason for rejecting all bids is that they exceed the estimated amount.
Right.
So, the contractor's probably not gonna take a chance of exceeding that amount because then we could just reject and go back out of the bid.
Thank you, sorry, I don't think that conversation is gonna be that long.
Um, so, we are now moving twenty eighty-two to twenty ninety-five without eighty-nine, ninety, and ninety-two. Mike, got that right?
Yes.
Okay, who would like to move those?
I'll move.
Um, wait, I'm so sorry, I thought that we just moved the library seventy-five thousand to the public hearing next week. How come this, is this like the appropriation, like we did before the bonds today, of nine, sorry, ninety-four?
Talking about the E P ordinance.
Needs in order to file the grant application, it's just a resolution intent on their part that you're gonna appropriate.
Oh, intent, oh, there's an extra E in there, I didn't know what that was, okay, good, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
I thought it comes in internet.
I thought it did, too, it, okay, thank you.
So, hang on, let me clarify this, because is, is an intent equivalent that we've already voted yes to approve it? Because I think the public hearing is important on that piece. So, is intent that we're willing to consider it, or intent that we're approving it?
It's not binding.
Okay.
It's just a document they need to file their grant application.
All right, so Christine moved, did I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. McQueen?
Yes.
Mr. McCready?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Okay, finally, bike tomorrow.
Bike tomorrow.
Would you like to, uh, I think I shared, um, Joe's email with all of you. He's got a very ambitious plan here.
Yeah, so, um, I was, I actually should have done more research to find out how many of you there are. Um, but I have, uh, I think enough, seven, seven or eight.
Give it to the cyclists.
Yeah, I understand there are a couple cyclists among you.
Yeah.
Um, my name's Joe Ray, a twenty-two-year resident on Old Fort Road and avid cyclist.
Oh, well, Anthony.
Do the daily community, this is very interesting for me to attend the, the meeting and hear all the conversation about biking earlier, uh, because it, it seems to have come up a couple times. I had an idea, um, maybe a month ago, that I would try and put together a route that would cover every single street, every borough and county road in, within the borough. Wasn't sure how many miles it would require to do that, there's a substantial amount of cul-de-sacs out and back type of thing, so there's a, a lot of duplication of, uh, mileage when you add it all up. Uh, so now I've gone out and actually done it and I've plotted a couple courses, um, with Ride with GPS, uh, creating a track. And, uh, so over the last three weeks, I've gone out on Saturdays and Sundays and done twenty-mile, thirty-mile chunks and, um, I think you can do it in a hundred miles. Fifty-three miles of, uh, borough maintained roads plus two oh two and five twenty-five. It is hilly.
Yeah.
If you wanna do the whole thing, it's hilly. So, this would be an event that I would like to create, but I would like to offer a couple, you know, three routes at a minute and have, uh, one that is for the people that wanna go out and just knock themselves out and do the whole thing. Uh, one that is, uh, um, more the central part of the borough, uh, maybe up, uh, to the borders of Baskin Ridge on, uh, the two sides, uh, going out to Old Army to the Baskin Ridge borders there and to, you know, to Pill Hill and so forth. And, and as far west or north, um, perhaps, uh, to like the, the foot of Anderson Hill, so Sealy Drive and, um, I don't think I'll take them up to Timber Rock, uh, Trail, that's a, yeah. Well, actually, the central borough, there'll be two central boroughs, and one will avoid Chilton and Timber Rock and a couple of the more hilly ones, so there'll be a, a flatter, but there's really very little flat in this town, in this borough, it's.
You're gonna take them up Clairemont all the way to the top?
Well, uh, I've done, um, I, I've been on, I think it might be Your Street, which I, I don't know if that's a private road, it might be.
It is.
It, 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 if it was public, you guys would need to pave it right now. So, anyway, um, that is my idea, is to have, uh, three routes, I'd have, uh, and I've plotted it out and generally the idea, um, the, the map that is on the third page there has kilometers on it, so you can kinda see, they don't tell you, um, exactly where each of those marks are, but you can kinda tell the general, um, the lower numbers in the early morning hours, uh, and as you get more to the middling. I've rooted it to come to, uh, St. John on the Mountain at, uh, the fifty-kilometer point, which would be a nice place at time to refill bottles and use bathrooms, have some, uh, you know, bananas and bars and things there for riders to avail themselves of there. And I've, uh, talked with Mayor Kinos about possibly, uh, St. Bernard's, and sometimes she's a parishioner there, uh, using, um, St. Bernard's as another, uh, opportunity as a hospitality place for the, both the all-day riders as well as the afternoon riders that are gonna do the, uh, shorter distance ride. And entertained the idea of possibly having a, uh, they call it a blessing of the bikes. It's something they do every year in, uh, St. John the Divine in New York, and it's kinda neat. It's, um, uh, so it'd be a nice way to, um, um, offer something like that, it's kinda unique. And at the end of the day, I think the route starts, all the routes would start and finish at the train station parking lot and then at the end of the ride, you can go across the street to the pub and grub, talk about how great you are, exchange tales of your accomplishments. How tired you are. Um, I did the, uh, twenty miles on Saturday and thirty yesterday, uh, and the thirty that I did yesterday was about three thousand feet of climbing and, uh, which is an awful lot for that short a distance, uh, and I could feel it, I do a lot of biking. That was a good, good kicker. I had thought about offering this on, um, late April, the twenty-fifth. It's kind of early in the season for, um, even, you know, if you're not a year-round cyclist to go attempt this, this is about nine thousand feet of climbing for this century ride, so it's pretty aggressive. It might be better offered later in the year when people have had a chance to, uh, build up their mileage. But, I'm gonna. Yeah.
Would riders be riding at their own risk, is there police escorts that, road closures that are necessary, how would that?
If I felt like this would be something that would draw so many people, then I think I'd be asking for some, uh, additional public safety type of help. If it's a sparse, then I wouldn't think it's necessary.
I think it's not sparse.
So, you'd have some kind of registration, people would sign?
I think you'd have to have some kind of registration and waivers.
Chief Allen has already weighed in.
Oh, he has, I didn't know that the chief's already weighed in, so chief's cool? Chief's cool on?
No, he's not.
Oh, he's not?
Chief's in that position, there would have to be road closures, there'd have to be supervision, that, there's an expense. I think this has to be thought through, I, I actually like the idea, although it's not for your everyday rider, as you pointed out.
Knocked it out.
I've been on a lot of these hills myself and, um, uh, you know, but I did think immediately, now that the tour of Baskin Ridge is closed, that, you know, we, we can pick it up and create a tour of Burnsville, but I think it's a long-term plan, it can't be done by April.
What if, what if you just did the?
That's, no, I have to be involved, it's public roads.
Yeah, it, it, anybody can come ride anytime they want.
Oh, yes, but, uh, but we're, we're talking about, it's public roads, that's true. But from a safety point of view, if you had twenty-five riders, really riding down two oh two, it becomes an issue. And that, you know, whether, uh, it's public road or not, the police are concerned about that.
No, I understand that point. As far as getting permission.
Oh, no, they could, anybody can go ride, I, I ride a lot of this myself.
Because I'm just concerned that we get permission about liability.
But if we're talking about an event, we're now talking an event that's now being approved by the borough and starting and ending from borough property. It's, it's, you know, there, there are some inherent dangers there.
Is it starting and ending from borough property?
Uh, the transportation.
That's public property, though, or is it borough property?
Well, it's either borough property or it's borough, it's New Jersey Transit property that the borough leases, so.
But is the borough property considered public property?
Yes.
Yes. But we, then we would only be responsible.
A vast amount from the town.
Yeah, but we would only be responsible for then anything that happens at the train station when they're starting or ending, not while they're out on the road. That would not be our liability, right?
Right, and it wouldn't be any greater than if somebody just had spiked there.
Right, you know, I think the main thing is, yes, it becomes a problem if you've got a, a whole crowd group all doing the same thing at the same time, but I don't think we're gonna get that.
I'm thinking ahead, that's what it will grow into. I think, that's your tent, is it not? Do you, do you have a group that, that this grows and, you have people, some people doing the shorter rides, some people doing longer rides?
This was, uh, for me, this was a, a, a one-time thing that I would thought I would throw out there and then if it would, uh, turned out to be something that, um, caught on, it could turn into, um, a, an ongoing thing.
So, what exactly are you asking then? Does the borough need to do anything, or are you just gonna wanna get ten of your friends to show up and you guys ride together?
Well, I've talked with, uh, the Ridewise Somerset, people have, uh, expressed an interest in maybe having, um, pitching in if it turns into a, a larger affair. I've talked with the woman that runs the group exercise program at the Y and she said she'd promote it, but we haven't. It's just been a one discussion. So it's been very casual at this point. It's probably the least organized organized ride you've ever seen. But I think it, it does have some potential to, to be something that could happen.
Yeah, I'd love to see. If it grows into something more substantial.
Then you'd have to have greater controls.
More formalized as it matures.
Yeah.
Right now, it's the most formalized, unformalized ride that I've ever heard.
Yeah, I'd be curious to see how many people will actually take it on.
I wouldn't be surprised to see fifty, sixty people.
Really?
Everybody would be riding the same, you ride that whole hundred something miles in one day.
That would certainly be the intent. I would be starting at seven, eight in the morning and finishing at five o'clock.
Will Tim Carter, the chief Valentine, say anything about this?
He's, well, as the police department, we're not doing a favor with some of these events because sometimes they're understaffed. Last, last year we had a bike tour come through and when it was set up, tours are supposed to stop at stop signs. It's not a race and continued. I was the officer working out on Linden Road and I was getting waves of bikes. And I had to control almost three intersections and it was almost impossible. And then traffic was backed up and you couldn't stop the bikes because they were all just running to each other because they don't have brake lights. They don't see each other stopping. And it was in, it was in the morning. Everybody was on their way to church. People were out of their cars yelling and screaming. And it was, it was a mess out on Linden Road. And then they were going up Linden and as they went up Linden, they were just riding on the wrong side of the road at the crest of Pfizer because they were going onto Pfizer. And that's a crest of.
Oh, you can't see coming over the other way?
No, you can't see. It was a hundred bikes at a time. And I think we sent two bikers to the hospital that day at Burnsville first aid squad.
So have you ever heard of what New Brunswick and other towns do cyclevia? So they do a cycling event, but it's more family oriented and that involves, they just close four blocks to traffic and divert the traffic somewhere else. And then those four blocks are bicycles only and pedestrians only. So it's kind of like.
For a number of hours.
It's kind of like a, right, like a street fair type of thing, but it celebrates cycling. It's called cyclevia. It originated in South America somewhere. So that would be a way to contain it.
Yeah, but I think this is more of a challenge.
And this is like for super duper cyclists like you and me.
This is a challenge, kind of phrase of biking, yeah.
But I would think that they would work nice in conjunction, you know, where you'd have a cycling event for beginners, like in the downtown area. And then have this option for like the serious cyclists who want to do the whole borough that day or whatever.
One option would be if people were concerned about volumes of cyclists rampaging around town is to cap it. And it would be required registration and, you know, you get to a hundred riders and you're done. So you don't have a thousand people clogging, they're running over each other, you know, you know, and they need to be qualified. And one of the responsibilities to any ride, you need to come with the proper gear. For me, you know, that's lighting and reflective and, and all that goes with that. You need to be in the proper physical condition to undertake, you know, to do the ride that you're trying to undertake. And you're prepared and, you know, what the rules of the road are.
Officer Ray, question for you. Is there, is there a, a volume of bikes that, not without endorsing anything, but is there a volume of bikes where your concern starts to? Because we have riders on our roads up on the mountain every weekend in some volume, right?
I mean, a pack of bikes causes a problem. Especially you're talking Saturday morning, Burnsville downtown is very busy around the train station.
I think you were looking at Sunday.
People going to the shopping town. Was it Sunday or was it the twenty-fifth?
I said the twenty-fifth.
Oh, is that a Saturday? Yeah, downtown is tough on a Saturday.
You know, you get one or two bikes that rolls on two oh two is fine, but then when you get them in packs, they're pushing cars into other lanes.
Is there a way to maybe time them out, you know, that they have, each have a separate?
You can release people, like space them out, you know, a couple minutes apart.
So that they're not in a pack, you know, and discouraged.
There's nothing to, you know, people ride at different paces and they, you know, they, you could end up in a bunch. But, you know, you could certainly release waves, you know, five or ten riders at a time.
Yes, so that you don't end up with a.
You usually want to ride with people of your same ability because you want to be, use drafting off them, just take turns at the front.
There's no drafting in Burnsville.
No drafting in Burnsville?
You can't draft up Claremont Road.
Oh, you can. You go hard, you hit the front of the front and sit in his wheel all the way out, it's done.
Yeah, I just, coming up two oh two, Baskin Ridge up towards the high school, there's a lot of cars on that road.
I drive, I bike it almost every day.
That's right. And the bike path, if you will, the shoulder is pretty, is narrow.
I will, with that in mind, and to talk about the roads and the quality of the roads, and I'll point this out on the back side of my text. The roads right now are as good as I have experienced in ten years of really using them heavily.
Can we say that again, please?
Turn to camera.
We just spent a lot of money on them, so they better be.
It's such a great time to, to ride a bike in town. It's fantastic.
Well, I, I mean, I'd like to see us promote events like that. They're very family-friendly.
I would too.
These are nice, this is what community is about. I mean, I hate to just say no.
I would love to have a bike shop in town.
Maybe there's some way we could do it.
I mean, because this is what a community building.
This time is sort of developing about wellness in a lot of ways.
Yeah, a little bit, I mean.
But I, I hear the concerns in regards to public safety.
I do think that, I mean.
But if we capped it, we capped it at fifty people. I mean, you probably get fifty people riding bikes around here on a weekend anyway.
But they're not all riding at the same time.
No, true, but I mean.
And then you'd have to be able to control it and then you'd have, people have to be numbered to make sure that other people just don't join the ride. It's, it's, it's a complex, as you, as you probably realize, it's a complex situation. I really would love to see this develop, morph into a tour of Burnsville, take over the one that used to be in Baskin Ridge. I think we need to, you know, think it through, work with. Because Greg Grinesco died, basically, and he ran it and the rec committee in Baskin Ridge didn't want to take it on.
What about having a hundred-mile bike ride that doesn't go on every single road, so now that involves every intersection in our entire borough? But went on a route that you did, you know, three twenty-five mile routes and it would be maybe easier to control because you could predict where everybody's gonna be. I'm looking a little bit over at the.
I mean, it depends how many intersections you want.
Right, but I mean, we could actually route it in a way that, that minimizes the need to control the intersections, you know what I mean?
There's a cost involved. I don't know how you plan in the ways you want for that.
I mean, as you said, by the way, April's really pretty early for the average rider, unless you're riding in the winter with gear and such. But can we just say that we'd like to see something like this happen, that we have.
Discussions.
Mr. Ray worked with the rec committee and some of us who are cyclists, Joe and John and I.
Yeah, I think that's great.
You know, we, we developed something that covers all these, you know, A, Bs and Cs that we have to cover.
This is exactly the type of thing that I'd like to see the rec, I mean, not to take, to the rec, our rec support.
You had mentioned maybe having Greg be involved. And even if you start the first year, twenty-five, no more than twenty-five people, just to see how it goes.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, and how, how much, you know, safety is involved in anything.
When I first envisioned it, I didn't have any.
Number.
Thought of what number of people it might be.
I can fully understand how the, the police in town wouldn't like to try to.
Well, just think, if you come down Chestnut and you go on the hardscrabble road.
I can't wait for that.
There's no, there's no, there's no shoulder on hardscrabble there. A lot of cars whipping around those curves and you're going pretty fast because you're going downhill at that point. That, that would be a dangerous section for more than three or four riders to be on at a time.
So maybe there's some solution that's sort of conceptually, I think your proposal, your proposal to work on it? And maybe if you two gentlemen are bike bicyclists, I'd take the lead. I don't know. That's up to you, Mike.
Yeah.
What follows, you know, it's your, your baby, you know, it'll be following.
We'll, we'll be resources.
Yeah. Okay, we'll start with ten people who are really committed to doing it and see how it goes, you know, just to test it out.
But we'll be making a hundred miles on these hills.
I don't, yeah, I'm wondering how good, you get ten people.
Kerry could do about ten.
Start with a fifty-miler and make it a Rattan, a Rattanay. I've never done one, the Rattaner. They, they go, they just get together in, and ride two hundred miles sometimes in a day. Or they can, they do it, yeah. And, and we could, we could maybe have Rattaner become, call it that. And then it's much more informal. We will, a rest stop for two would be great, but if we kept that off borough property. And I think maybe October, to have people legged up. Yeah, but for fifty, fifty, you could probably do April. Yeah, I'd rather fifty than April. It'd be hilly. It'd be tough. You'd know it, that's for sure. But I think it's a great idea. It's, everything's complicated, but it's a great idea. It'd be great encouragement to find a way to make this work.
Can you leave your email or phone number with Anthony so that we can reach out to you?
We have it. It was in the packet, I think.
Is it in the packet?
Oh, yeah, because I.
His email was at the back. I think it was like the second to last.
It's in our packet because I forwarded your email, so the address is in there.
Hoorays at me that time.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
All right, thank you. Okay, next was the Park RX program, which was, let me find it. It's after this. This was the Somerset County Park Commission and the county asking us to enter our parks in the National Park RX database so that if a physician recommends that a patient needs to exercise, that they can look up different places in town where they, you know, they could go for a walk, they could hike, they could, you know, ride their bike or something. So I, you know, I'm not sure who would, who the person is that would be our, would do that. I guess it would be recreation. Should, can we forward it to them to log on there and get a, a sign in and put in our parks?
I could do that.
Yeah, okay. If everybody's okay with that, are we good with that?
Yeah.
My only concern is we have to make it clear when we started talking about writing a prescription, that if somebody thinks that, well, doctor wrote a prescription, I need exercise, I'll go out and buy shoes, it'll be covered by insurance. That's not gonna happen. That's what people think, you know? So we just want to make sure that this is sort of a fun prescription, not a real medical one.
Interesting. I would think it might be more of a verbal prescription, but yeah, it says they can. Yeah, it's online.
I mean, I'll speak very specific in my business. We're actually working to have doctors in other health prescribe different things other than, than just pharmaceuticals, whether it's exercise, whether it's education. I have no problems with a prescription.
Well, I don't either. I want people to know what, what it means. So in other words, a physician can write a prescription, by the way, that you need to go to a health club if you're an obese and diabetic and whatnot. And if, if their insurance company authorizes that, then that's actually valid. I don't want people to get the impression that all of a sudden physicians are saying, you need to go walk, you know, up and down one of our parks that if they, you know, that if they need to get some walking shoes, that that's gonna be paid for.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
We have to be careful of the word prescription.
I missed the first part.
Okay, so we'll have, Anthony, you'll take care of that. Six F, I think I just do this myself, right, as a point, point and grant.
These are both mayor's appointments, the planning board and environmental commissioner.
Okay, so that's just notification that we, that was the position that was held by Bonnie Sellers.
Just had a question because looking at his application, we were getting incredibly well-qualified, but he didn't check off environmental commission.
No, that, but that's the position on the planning board is that you have to do, it's the representative from the environmental commission to the planning board. So when I called him to see if he was still interested and said, this is, you have to do both. He said he was very interested in sustainability as well, so.
Got it, okay.
He agreed to do both.
Yeah, I personally would endorse Graham. I think he's really, really smart.
Oh, yes, same thing is impressive. I just, I just didn't, I didn't hope that was something he was interested in.
You know, so he put in a, a skills bank like three years ago or something and it was still in there. So said, hey, you still want to do this? And actually said the timing was better because he had changed jobs and, you know, didn't have the time before that, so. Then Anthony, do you send him a letter and send Bob Graham something that he knows he's getting?
I'll send Bob Graham and I'll send, yeah, and I'll send Graham also.
Okay.
So does he become a full member of the planning board or an alternate or what?
Um, he's a voting member. I forget which type it is.
He's a class two member.
Class two.
So so his, his term on the planning board is concurrent with his term as a member of the environmental commission.
Okay, mayor's update, February twenty-seventh, I called bingo for the seniors. That was a lot of fun. They really loved that. They, for some reason, they couldn't be at the senior center, so they were in the parish house at St. Bernard's. But they had pizza and bingo. It was great. February twenty-eighth, I met with the two ladies from Summit Prep, which is on Claremont, fairly new group over there, tutoring group. They also have obviously a place at Summit. And they are going to be offering a five thousand dollar Strive for Excellence scholarship. So for SAT or ACT preparation for a student. And they want to do it annually and it'll be by submitting an essay. Yeah, and they asked, you know, for, if, you know, I would be one of the people reading the essays and the superintendent. And so I thought that was really generous of them. And they're gonna do something else too. You know, and they're gonna offer a free mock ACT, ACT test for the sophomores in April at the high school, which I felt was really nice of them too, yeah. March fourth, I went to the retirement for Mike Kerwin, who's the executive director of the Somerset County Business Partnership. He's come and presented to us. It's kind of the chamber for the whole county. And Chris Edwards will be the new director there. Jeff and I attended the neighborhood watch meeting that the police department put on Thursday night. A decent amount of attendance considering it was a Thursday night. Really good program. If people are interested, the police will come and, you know, if you talk to your neighbors and you want to set up a neighborhood watch, they'll help you get that organized. The other thing I thought was important is they have a security camera voluntary registration program. So if you have cameras at your house and you register them, it's, it's good for the police to know because should something happen in the area, they'll know that they could maybe reach out to you and see if your camera caught something, somebody driving by or somebody walking. So let them know if you have cameras.
Interesting. And I, so I'm thinking of some people that think in a different persuasion. Is there a liability in having a, so let's just say that you have a camera and you choose not to let, for privacy reasons, not to let anyone have access to that camera? And I know that there's a lot of people concerned about privacy rights.
Some of them do it voluntarily. You can't take it.
But if it's, if they volunteer, if they, if they say to the police department, look, we have a camera, it's no different than saying to Google, we have a camera. Or is it subpoenable? Is there any downstream consequences that people want to maintain privacy?
I know we're, we're supposed to do it, you can register and if something happened, we can call you and say, can you check your camera? And you're supposed to check your camera, then get back to us and let us know if there's anything that's, that's.
I mean, I know in my house, we don't have any of that stuff because we don't have Alexa, no one wants to be watched. And I know there's people that have that persuasion.
Yes, I do too.
I'm just wondering if there are any legislative downsides or onslaught of guidance.
Not that I know of off the top of my head, but I imagine anything could be subpoenaed in this world.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, whether you register your camera or not, they could still come and ask you for it.
And it says, please note that you are not obligated to grant this department access to your surveillance camera footage at any time, whether your system is registered or not. So they can ask and you can say no. So you have that option, but I think it's a good tool.
I first knew you two. I was asking.
It was a good program and that, but actually was one of the takeaways. And we have had at least one instance that I'm aware of where somebody on the bubbles come out and said that there was an incident near my house and they were asking neighbors to do it. So now we could actually codify it under an organized way of doing it with the police.
Is that also, would you encourage businesses to do the same? Because I know a lot of businesses kept cameras. I mean, I know a Kulanis were considering adding in cameras after what happened there a week ago.
They have King Center, I don't remember the name of the business, but down at King Center, they're always giving us footage of accidents or stuff that happens around King Plaza.
ShopRite has cameras too, but yeah. Okay, March sixth, Jack and I met with New Jersey Transit. I don't know, can I share that or not?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Was it, you know, just, we had asked them about the train station. In the past, we've always done a bid process and we've asked if we could do an RFP this time, which they seemed very supportive of because he actually gave us a sample of one that Chatham had done.
They actually did. It's a transit on station.
Right.
An RFP, they put you at the Chatham. It never came to fruition, but I think it's way to go.
Yeah, and it was a very good sample and they didn't seem to have a problem with us doing that because we felt by doing an RFP instead of a bid, we can have more flexibility. we can have more flexibility in how we select someone, rather than just whoever bids the highest rent.
Most.
Or in the lowest, no, the highest.
You're right, you're right, you're right.
It would also allow a little liquid concession there.
Yeah, and they did agree to the liquor.
They did.
Yes.
Yes.
Congratulations, great.
One problem at this point in time is our lease is over 2025, and that really is not enough time for somebody to come in and put capital improvements into the building. So they're looking into how we can extend our lease.
I know that there are other discussions that are ongoing regarding ownership. Did any of those things?
They're still.
They're, they're looking into it, but it's, it's gonna be a tough go, because of the, and I forget, what was the name of the, the wires they?
Yeah. They're red wires.
Yes, they had a fancy name for it, but it's very low and.
Catas something.
Catis, yeah. So they're not liability wise.
The liquor, is that a separate liquor license then?
Outside.
It's a limited concession, because it's a, it's a state owned.
Where they'd have to access them.
So this, uh, this, whoever, uh, you know, is a successful bidder on putting a, a venue in there, if it's a food venue, do they have to pay a million bucks for the concession, like a liquor license?
No.
Maybe not. It's not, it's not another better license.
It's a concessionaire. They call it a concessionaire's license.
If the purchase is off the table, which sounds like that, and they have challenges, can we extend the lease right now till 2040?
Well, they won't go that long.
Whatever the term that they're willing to accept.
They have to go to the board, it's more than five years. So we talked to them that evening, it's like five, it's two five year options, which would take us about 15 years.
Okay.
Right, they're gonna get back to us.
Yeah, we didn't get a definite answer. It was, it was really a good meeting. Um, and then that evening, the 6th, um, was the reveal party for the, uh, murals that will be on the train trestle there, and that'll be, I think, in the paper on Thursday. It'll be an article, and on this Thursday at 6:30 will be, downtown Burnsville is having, um, its quarterly community meeting, and they will show the murals that night too. So if anybody in the community wants to see what the murals are gonna look like, uh, the meeting's in the community room at the high school at 6:30 on Thursday. Um, oh, today, I guess, well, I heard you were on it as well, the, um, coronavirus, uh, there was a conference call with Freeholder Robinson. And we are not part of the county health system. We have Basking Ridge that does our health system, our health department. Um, but they're trying to keep the messages organized and accurate, and not, you know, everybody doing their own thing, every town doing their own thing. Um, one of the things the health department gave us, I gave you a copy of this, and I put some on the counter, was this, uh, spread facts not here, which is just, I thought was a useful flyer to have for people. Um, I loved your thing about the, how many times a day did you wash your hands as a surgeon?
Thirty to fifty.
Yeah.
That's why they're always so red.
Um, and on the county level, they're, they're not recommending at this point canceling gatherings, community gatherings. Um, you know, that's, you can if you want to, but they're not saying that you need to do that. Um, there is information on the Somerset County website, and they're doing most of the communicating through the emergency management people, so, um, and they're also gonna be talking to the superintendents of school, uh, the county one, to get the message out to the schools, so that they're all following similar protocols. So that was.
So can I, if I could just add, uh, because, um, we do have a, a pretty strong office of emergency management, so there is a lot of links and a lot of important information that's updated on the police department, uh, website, so you can access that either directly to the police department or through, uh, the borough. There's a tab on there for the police department, you go to that. Uh, there's a lot of good current information, some of which comes from the county, some from the state. So that's a, that's a resource for people who have questions. And the other thing, it did come, the mayor mentioned it, about not canceling, um, events. The mayor of Somerville asked specifically about their, uh, St. Patrick's Day parade, which is one of the largest in the state, and, uh, that's, as of now, it's still going forward.
Yeah, and they thought because it was an outside event, you know, the, the risk was lower than something in a confined space, so. I don't know, how many of you go to that parade?
I go to Morris Town.
Oh, yeah, right. Um, the last thing was, uh, if you remember last meeting, we, um, opted in to do the food stock program, the food collection, and what I, I need at this point, or they need, is kind of a point person, you know, somebody to head it up. I don't know, Ralph, if that's somebody in the borough, or, because we, you know, we're extending it out to the public as well as, last year you did the employees. So I don't know if there's, um, what group in town, maybe a committee or something, that might be appropriate to do a food drive.
We worked with Bob Swisher last year.
Yeah, it's kind of his thing.
We worked internally here at the borough.
Right.
I, I mean, do you feel it's gonna be bigger than?
Well, that's what they're asking us to do. They're asking it to be bigger than, and actually they want us to compete with Bedminster, see who gets the most pounds of food.
Can we partner with ShopRite Valley?
Yeah, right.
Well, how, what would you?
So that's what, I'm just not sure, you know, like if it's, there's a committee that's interested in, I don't know, do we have, we don't have a social services group or committee or? Well, think about it. If you have somebody, you think that's, that's a real passion for them, that might be one of.
When, when is, is there a deadline?
It's for the month of April. We're supposed to collect all through the month of April.
No, a deadline for them to know who the contact is.
No, no. It's really up to us, you know, how we're gonna organize it in, in the town.
And it's Somerset County?
Talk to.
It's all of, what they wanted to do is have every town in Somerset County participate, and then kind of compete with each other to see who gets the most pounds of food. It's for the Somerset County Food Bank.
So somebody on the borough's committee?
Barbara Long.
Yeah, you think she would cheer up?
Barbara Long, she, I, I know she did the farmer's market. She did at the farmer's market. She stood out there with bags for people to, so maybe it's something she might be interested in.
Mayor, our, sorry, I didn't interrupt you. Our group, you know, just handled inside in the borough.
Right, no, I know that, yeah.
So, you know, we could do that here, but I think.
You know, could we have a collection box here, like in the lobby, so people, people could drop stuff? Because it's really having places for people to put things, whether, you know, Starbucks will put a box out or.
To reaching out to the rest of the community, like, I'm sure we could use some help with that.
Yeah.
We'll, you know, our people in here will, will take care of our people in here.
Okay.
If you can give us some help outside, we can be helpful, I'm sure.
All right, we'll work on that. Okay, we got a couple weeks yet before April. Who? Walker Plaza, there you go, for your customers over there. Um, that was all I had. So, do we have any correspondence? I didn't think so. Um, any unfinished business? Something we haven't finished? Have you got any new business?
I just have one item, um, to bring up, and this goes along the line with this item that, um, Christine brought up last meeting. I know we've been all engaged in the whole budgeting process, and I know that's going to go in front of the public for a comment very soon. Um, I'd like to start a parallel process that looks to take a short and long-term plan. And again, discuss it in the public and create some solutions to take us from where we are, which right now I perceive to be a less than optimal fiscal position to a more optimal fiscal position, both in the short term and long term. I'd like to offer to lead that in parallel with the budget, which you guys are doing a great job getting that to where it needs to be. And maybe in parallel, have that type of discussion about how we take us as a borough from point A to point B. And wanted to see if the rest of the council was agreeable to that, and if anyone else wanted to participate in analyzing those and creating a, a structured plan.
Um, it sounds like that's a responsibility of the finance committee.
Could be.
I don't know if that's anybody. You're talking about, um, like immediate expend, like.
I'm, I'm talking about creating some short-term benchmarks and some things that we can do, as we, I'm looking forward, one of the things I don't believe we can do, and I, I know Tom's and John have done a great job getting us to where we are right now with the budget. Um, I don't wanna be reactionary in, in nine months. With various departments saying, in nine months, look, this is where we want our departments to be now. I wanna give them nine months of lead time. So in order to give them lead time, if there's either budgetary freezes, or there's cuts, or there's changes, I wanna give a guidepost now, as we come out of this fiscal season going into next. Um, and I think there's some simple decisions that we can make to provide that guidance. Um, but it's gonna require a few of us to probably get those, those decisions codified in front of this group for discussion.
Is that something that could be done through that strategic planning initiative that we started?
Um, it could be. Um, yeah, it's not, you know, I think that's more than we wanna, you know, at public meetings to get into the weeds on the, on the budget, really.
Yep.
But it might be, um, part of, because we have another strategic planning session, so that might be the place to get it started, and then maybe shift it over into the finance committee and out again.
It, it's definitely part of the strategic planning process that we have. And as we began that last week, I foresee that process taking six months, probably, maybe four, before we have a, a codified plan and vision for this council and for the borough, that's, again, both short-term and long-term. I feel that the budgetary decisions, and they don't have to be, we're not talking about a line item budgetary item. We're talking about, do we have to freeze spending for one year to create enough fiscal capital for us in 12 months, so we can start reinvesting in the borough? Do we have a time when we wanna be debt-free as a borough? What are those, those guideposts and, and benchmarks that we wanna obtain? So that way, we can work to those plans. Um, I had some additional discussions with all of this group, Ralph included, as we've gone through the budgetary process, and I have in my, in my mind, some things we can do pretty simply. But I think there needs to be more vetting that goes on, so.
The more you describe it, the more it sounds like it's part of the, well, that's strategic and the finance committee. I mean, when we're talking about, do we wanna be, there's one that's a philosophical, do we wanna be debt-free by X, Y, Z year? That's under strategic planning. How to get to be there is under finance, so I'm not sure I wanna create another, get another committee to deal with that.
Yeah, but I mean, but, you know, and I don't know why this wasn't done in the past, so I would, I mean, from your perspective, Chad, I hear where you're going, because I mean, obviously, the first year on council is the first year I'm seeing any of this, and I know I left that meeting a little uneasy about where we are from a financial position as a borough. So what can we do to make something, to, to move the needle and reduce the amount of debt that we have, which is too much for my, for my being comfortable? Um, what can we do? And I don't know, maybe if the finance committee wants to take this and come back and present something, but I guess we need to agree maybe on what the goals.
Well, I think that the goals are, so for example, I was talking with Ralph, because we were talking some, Ralph, I don't know, is okay if we talked a little bit about in, in concept, you know, one simple thing, if we did nothing more than freeze spending in 2021, that would free up, and, and have our normal tax increase in the backend, that would free up approximately half a million dollars of capital, um, for us to reinvest in our roads, and get us back to, to a threshold of having, you know, a, a certain amount of capital reserves in this borough and be able to spend without having to bond. I think we can make some simple decisions.
Sorry, if we freeze spending for one year.
Yeah.
And raise taxes a typical amount, is that what you just said? That would free up half a million dollars?
That's what Leslie calculated in the back of the napkin today.
That's a total freeze.
Well, no, what about salaries? You have to do salaries.
And I, and I was doing just, again, this was a very back of the napkin item.
Well, if we have a $14 million budget.
Yes.
And taxes went up 3% last year.
Yes.
3% of $14 million is $320,000?
She had her big calculator. I didn't attempt to do the math.
Well, that doesn't, it doesn't, the math doesn't make sense to me.
Well, but that was as an example. I, I think there are some things.
Well, I just don't think we'd be careful, because if you make a statement that we can free up half a million dollars by just doing a one-year freeze, and that's not accurate. I just think we have to be careful, because, you know, the next thing you know, it's printed in the newspaper.
That's fair.
Um, I hear what you're saying. I understand, you know, what, what it is you're looking for. I think, uh, Jeff, I, I agree with you that we should take this up in the, and I think with the strategic planning, um, I think it was four weeks, we're supposed to have the whole group again to go over the list. And then we should have just us to have a session, um, for our internal things that we talked about, that, you know, kind of got pushed off the list because it was the extended group that was meeting, and do a, uh, strategic planning for the, the items that we listed as just focusing on here. And then from that, give it to charge finance with, with coming back with that, a strategy.
I think that's fair, and, and it's very clear in that first meeting, finances and budgets, a big, will be a piece of that, in my opinion, as we're sitting where we are today.
And I think, at least as I understand it, the bulk of our budget is, is personnel.
Personnel.
We, if we freeze all spending, there is a whole lot that we have discretion to freeze. I mean, we have contracts or some things we can't freeze.
We, well, I mean, we're in negotiation for a police contract right now. There, there's healthcare expenses that, you know, aren't something that you can't just necessarily freeze because you wanna freeze healthcare expenses. There are certain, there's pension obligations. I think there's things we need to look at. The back of the napkin calculation, I understand, I understand that, but, you know, I think it takes a more rigorous analysis before we start to bander about certain dollar values.
I'm proposing, that we, we create a, a plan to have a certain threshold of capital every year, and what our goal is, and then have a set plan about how do we get to capital, capital reserve requirement that we're looking for? And also, a cash requirement so that we can invest that money on a yearly basis going forward. And the, the path to that can take a dozen left turn, right turns. I just don't wanna be here next January and not have that decision made. I wanna make it now, so we can, if there are changes, we can inform our departments.
Yeah, I think that's part of, of goal setting, exactly, you know, how, what do we wanna do with our debt? What do we wanna do with our cash reserves and, and, uh, capital?
Yeah.
You know, that's, and setting those priorities.
And parameters.
I just wanna add, like, uh, one of the things that we talked about in Public Works was, uh, had to do with the management of the borough in the past, where, you know, a road would be looked at differently than the way that we've been doing the past couple of years, which is more proactively, not waiting for a road to fall apart essentially, but doing what's required before it falls apart, because it winds up costing you more when you wait for it to fall apart. So if you sit here and say, okay, we're gonna save all our money and not do any roadwork for a year, well, you're actually costing the borough more, because then next year it's gonna cost you more to fix it. So that was part of the conversation that we had in Public Works, which is, you know, you can wait and not spend for a certain amount of time, but you have to keep in mind that infrastructure requires maintenance, and it can't, you can't just let it fall apart and have unhappy residents and unhappy townspeople who can't ride their bikes, because the roads are so bad. We're doing a great job managing it with our debt. Our debt isn't, you know, more than most of the surrounding town, so I don't really think we're in that bad of a fiscal position when you look at the condition of the roads and the infrastructure.
I would respectfully disagree with a couple of those statements, and I think it's really important that we don't encumber ourselves in a way that extends, I mean, and I know we're gonna talk the details later, and I, I wanna, I don't wanna get in front of that. The, the thought process of encumbering, encumbering ourselves for decades beyond where we are now is one that doesn't sit well with me. So there has to be an inflection point, whereas as a town and as a borough, we say, look, we're gonna change the path, or we're not. I firmly believe we need to change the path that we're on right now. We need to rip the Band-Aid off, it might hurt, but we gotta find a way back to fiscal health. And my assessment right now is we're not there.
Yeah, I mean, and I think the thing is, is it's bigger than roads, right? It's all of our capital assets, and we need a full listing of those capital assets, along with their ratings, so that we can plan, right? So if I'm planning, I know in my house, my roof is gonna need to be replaced in however many years. If you're doing things properly, you're saving up that money, so that you don't have the big hit, or you're at least planning for the big hit. And in this case, right now, we don't have that type of plan. We have parts of it, but it's just not cohesive, I don't think. And again, it's about the services that we offer and the price we pay for those services as a budget. We don't have much room in our budget, right? We, we give a lot of it out, and that's required. But what we're left with, we do, I think, have a, have a responsibility to our residents, it's their money. And we need to make sure that we're planning appropriately, and we don't have to end up in a $10 million bond situation just to fix our roads, like we're in now. But I think, Christine, to your point, I think it goes toward a plan, a policy, that we have, so that it's not every new council person that turns over every couple of years, that it's on their whim, that we need a policy from.
Yeah, I agree. We've talked about this a lot in our fantasy meetings. I think next week, no, next couple weeks of budgets introduced, we can cover a lot of these things. I mean, we've looked, you know, graphs and.
I mean, we've looked, you know, graph and graph, you know, trying to figure out the least painful way of getting our debt curve to flip. And, you know, it's, it's, what, it's seven years out, Tom, before it flips, or 10?
Probably 10.
You know, it's, unfortunately, you know, short of tax hikes or, you know, and we would, we actually go through line by line. Sometimes there's variances that we can't control.
2033 number, right?
The debt, the debt, you have the, you have the plan in front of you.
I do.
It doesn't.
It starts to decline, I think, in one to two years from now.
2033 is just the number I had in my head, I don't.
So, the, the meaningful changes in 2033.
Meaningful, I think, is a, that's kind of a subjective.
Well, so, there are small changes that are less than 10%, as I'm looking at it here, over the next decade. And the dramatic change in our debt service changes in 2033.
Yeah, if we want to get to the.
This would be a good conversation to have in conjunction with introducing the budget, I think.
I think so too. And I, I was, I didn't, I didn't want to get into this discussion, I merely wanted to say that's, that's create a solution that is agreeable, looks to solve, so we can move forward.
Yeah, and I, I think you make a point, you know, I think what we have to do is set a policy in motion of, this is how we do the budget, so that, like you said, every time the council changes, it's not undone and something, you know, and now, okay, you know, we're not, we're not, we're going to cut all the taxes and not put any money aside. And then the next year, it's, oh my God, now we have to save money, you know? Something that's sustainable and keeps us on an even capital reserve, so we can do a lot more projects with cash. I think that's the angle.
Your last two years, your last two years on the finance committee, would you say that's what we've been doing?
Exactly.
And that's what we, we talked about. If you look at the, the budget, you know, down the line, there'll be, should be a big pot of money, but it's up to, like, future councils not to say, hey, look at this pot of money that's coming down the road, let's, let's borrow it now.
Right.
We can't control them.
No, we can, but we can hopefully say, create a culture and a, a sustainable plan that they look at, oh, this makes sense, you know, and stick with this.
Yeah, and I think that's our goal, that's been what we've been working towards.
I feel pretty good about where we're at in that conversation. I mean, given what we have to work with, and, you know, obviously, what you're input too, because, you know, we're close to it. Sometimes you need a second perspective, but, you know, I think, you know, this is a good, I think we're a good, a, a lynch point this year, in a positive way.
Yeah.
I, I think there's a positive inflection that we can have right now.
Yeah. And on, you know, that, as, as Tom said, that's the last two years that I've been on the finance committee, that's where we've been heading. It's, you know, is trying to create this same sustainability and building up our capital reserve. So it's just not going to happen as quickly as we'd like, but we're getting there. You know, we're in, we're in line to do that. And I think you're right, this should be the discussion when we introduce, not even when we introduce, but when we have the, it could be when we introduce it, or when we have the public hearing on.
Yeah, well, it's, it's good to have, you know, we can cover these points when it comes up in a couple of weeks, because, you know, they're all valid questions.
Any, you know, questions you have about the budget, if you can get them to the finance committee as we're working on the, the end part, so that we can answer them ahead of time or address them, would be useful, you know, if there's specific things, so that, you know, we kind of are prepared with numbers instead of throwing numbers out.
Yeah, and just to correct, so I said 2033 because that's the point in time where we get over a million dollars in the capital fund.
That's because the voter approved, that's because the voter approved $10 million worth of debt, that the voters approved comes off in that year.
Yeah.
So I think it's kind of a misnomer to think that any kind of, like, near-term decision has gotten us to that sort of 2033 timeframe. This is something that occurred in 2014, it was put to the voters, 2015, it was, am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think one of the things that we should do as we look at this is, we look at this plan, and I think we can, we should, as we look at it, look at the portions of the debt that are voter-approved, voter-driven, and that were inherited.
Yes.
And those that we've encumbered and that we project to encumber in the future in terms of taking on or dismissing debt, you know, by paying it off. So I think that those are important facts to have as we go forward in the discussion.
And I don't want to, I don't want, so, just to be clear, I'm, I'm not, well, I wasn't pointing the fingers at anyone, any of the seven of the current council people.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is, the facts of where we are are the facts. Let's work as a team and then.
But I, but I think also, the context.
I feel you're being a little defensive, Tom, in this whole thing, which is not about you.
I feel that there's some statements that have been thrown out that are not exactly factual. And it, and I think, you know, to the same extent here, spreading facts, not fear, is a good thing to do as it relates, as it relates to our financials, as well as, you know, other things. What Christine tried to point out, I think, was the fact that there were decisions made in, in the further distance past about, let's just cut everything, let's do nothing. And let's think it was a period of five or seven years, where there was exactly zero spend on capital. Is that right, Ralph? It was multiple years, I've seen it on the spreadsheet that you gave us.
Are you, Tom, are you speaking about just road projects when there wasn't any work done?
Right, there was nothing, not, 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 I'm not saying a little, there was zero.
For two years, absolutely two years.
At any rate, I think that that got us to the situation where we had to spend more to get healthy. And that's where I think the road referendum came in. And I think at the time that the road referendum was passed, the $10 million number was selected, but it wasn't actually all the money that we needed. We had under-invested for so long that 10 million was not even the full, the full amount that we needed to sort of get healthy. And we're, we're, we're trying to work on that today as well. And that's not incorporated in any monies that we borrowed to date, but it's part of the projections that we have on the, on the sheet that you're referring to.
Yeah, I think the, the numbers I've heard is if we borrowed 10 million, it should have been 20. That's how far behind, how about in April we were. I think the finance, the current finance committee is running things pretty lean, you know? You gotta, you gotta give them credit for doing what they're doing. And at least since I've been on the council, I think we're, in 2020, we're making up for what happened in 2010, basically, around that point. I think, you know, I, I, I think our long-term plan, given the fact that, you know, the very, the variations in politics are that we may not be around long-term, because one never knows. But, you know, long-term planning is hard in this situation, and that's, that's one of the drawbacks of the kind of government we have. But I think we're doing a pretty good job, I have to say. And, and I can say that because I wasn't part of the process, I don't have to feel defensive about it.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that we're doing a bad job, I don't think that's what Chad's saying either. And we, as the current council, and you guys as being on for the last one, two, three years, it's, it's just about the fact that we are where we are, and how do we get ourselves into a better position with the ideal state coming from our CFO of having a million dollars in a capital fund and not reaching that goal until 2033? What can we do in order to move that up and get ahead of ourselves from a capital plan perspective? That's all, I don't, I mean.
Welcome to the team.
I think those are the discussions that take place in every finance committee, as best I understand. And also those discussions that I think we've embarked on with our strategic planning initiatives.
Yeah, and Joe Ray thinks our, our roads are the best ever, so.
As I said, we invested a lot of money in the last five years, so they better be.
Yeah, good to hear, though. Okay, we good? Can we move on to our closed session?
Sorry, no, my new business, just from the Board of Ed, the joint venture that I brought up in the last meeting. You said we'd readdress after the vision meeting.
Did we talk to the superintendent at the time?
I did not speak with her, no.
She was in her group.
She was. I didn't bring up the fact that I wanted to put a council thing together, because I thought it was going to come out of the vision session itself. Because I, but I did attend a Board of Ed meeting, and they are starting a, a marketing, a marketing committee, if you will. And I volunteered to be part of that. But I think that that has a different goal and objective than.
Oh, that, that was more change in the image kind of thing, is that what they were talking about?
My understanding, that was to project the fact that depending upon which score you look at, which ranking you look at, we're, we're, our school system is better than some people perceive it to be.
I think quantitatively, when you look to snapshot our school system suffers, but, you know, having lived here, I mean, kids go there. There's a qualitative factor, there's, you really can't, like, snapshot, you know?
But that's what Zillow does to us.
I know, and then we're, you know, it's, and that's, that's what's frustrating to me, you know?
And you can dig into the details of Zillow's rating too. And you can see that it's about the equity.
That's a Board of Ed initiative, not ours, and, and that's what they're going to work on.
They're working on their image, but what I would like to work on is just joint ventures in general, right? Like, for our property values, we can't increase our property values as a council without the Board of Ed. And the Board of Ed can't increase our property values without us. So we need to work together, and there's other things that we can work on, except for property values, the safe route to schools. And there's other, like, joint things that we can do together as our community moving us forward.
Well, I think if I remember correctly, at the strategic meeting, Superintendent Dempsey was open to that idea.
Yeah, I think I did bring that up.
I think she, I've heard similar.
Yeah. So it's just a matter of making it happen.
Should I just reach out? I don't, I don't want to, I don't know protocol, I just, no, I will.
I'll ask her, and see if she, you know, and then I don't know who would want to be on it. But it'd have to be two, two council people, because you can't have more than three, or no, three council people, or whatever. We did have one meeting without, about the.
Yeah, it was an issue specific about the.
Of fields?
Use of, like, shared spaces and.
Myself and John.
Yeah, it was a single issue, though, I think, versus a ongoing conversation, which probably is worth having.
Or maybe I'll write a formal letter.
That's probably the best way to do it, to respond.
Because it should be more than her, it should be the superintendent and the board, because it should be their decision as well, if they want to participate. Okay, are we ready to go into executive? Do we have a motion?
We may come out there.
Uh, we will come out. So we will reopen afterwards. So do I have a motion to go into closed session, and then we will come back out?
I'll move to adjourned executive session.
A second.
Okay. Okay.
Just reopening into public session, so we had two resolutions. Do we have numbers on them?
One is 20-96 and the other one is 20-97.
So 2096 is the attorney?
It doesn't matter which one.
Okay, we'll say that because we did that first, so that's appointing Marizetti.
Yeah, go insert the funding Joseph Marizetti.
Marizetti.
Marizetti Falcone OLP in accordance with the proposal dated March 5, 2020 at the rate set forth in the proposal, which range from $125 per hour for the first 10 hours to $195 a blended rate. And the last one doesn't apply because there's no redevelopment.
Okay, so somebody want to move that?
I'll move.
If a second?
A second.
Okay, do we need a voice vote?
You have voice votes, right?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, and then the next is 2090 what, three?
97.
97 is for Richard Vaughn to be full-time employee.
I'll move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we took care of those two. Now you want to talk about the policy on people getting sick to make them. I know somebody just told me, Morgan Stanley, that if they go on, if they leave the country, they are automatically quarantined for they can't come back to work for 14 days.
Do we have a personnel committee later this?
Well, we were just talking about doing one next week.
Next week?
So maybe, yes.
We don't have a standing time for personnel meetings, that's the thing.
Right, but if we're gonna have one in the next 10 days, can we bring it up in that session and then come back to the council with a?
With a policy?
Proposal.
What I can, what I can, I've spoken, I've not spoken directly to the chief about this, but Brian and, you know, and the OEM people. And I know that, you know, I've gotten, not gotten really any, any feedback as, as to, you know, what a plan might be. But what I can tell you is that we have the capacity to work remotely. There are three people, employees right now that have their computers are set at home to work. At home, so it can, so it can be done. That I can tell.
For those individuals.
Maybe it's not as, look, we sent out a simple email to my company this morning. If you get sick, don't go to work. You know, it doesn't, you don't have to have a Corona test, you know, to verify that you have something bad. If you have the cold or the flu right now, those kind of symptoms, don't come in, don't come in work remotely. And that simple communication can mitigate a lot of issues.
The problem is, is you don't, and what's insidious about this virus is that you don't get symptomatic right away. You can go five to 14 days before you're symptomatic. Meanwhile, you're contaminating the entire building. And that's what, you know, they now have shut down Berkeley Heights and Roselle schools because a parent of one of the kids, you know, becomes sick and/or becomes exposed. And now they have to, so they have to clean the facility. So, I mean, I think it could incapacitate us, particularly, it's true that some of your employees could work from home, but some of them really have to do face-to-face jobs. So I think we need to have a plan.
I think we need to have a plan. I don't, what's the best way to do it and when do we need it? How fast do we move on it, you know?
How can anybody, how can anybody interact face-to-face if they were ill or possibly ill? As, I mean.
But they might not know they're ill.
But they'd infected. If someone got ill and we were all here in the building, we found out tomorrow that someone was sick, so how would any of us then be allowed to work face-to-face with anyone?
Well, that's the whole point. You wouldn't be able to.
Right, I think we need to figure out, like, if, if there's a, if there's a requirement that we shut down for whatever reason. I mean, there's, it's a scenario that may never happen.
Right, right, right.
What do we do in that scenario? Do we answer phones from home? Do we have a message on our website that tells people what to do? You know, how do taxes get collected?
Exactly.
Right, like, like, we need a contingency plan in the event that, we don't have to figure out what shuts us down. We say, what happens, what do we, how do we operate the borough if we're shut down? Would that be a good way to look at it?
Yes.
So forget about how it happened. We just assume it might happen at some point in the future. How do we operate?
Sure, and that can be the same thing in the emergency management plan. I don't know if it's part of that, if there was another hurricane or.
Well, yeah, I think the emergency management plan, at least as, as I know, as I understand it, is for more, it's more short-term focused. You know, we have a snowstorm or we have some environmental thing like that, or there's flooding. It's time limited. The problem with this is that it's an extended period of time.
It could be, I mean, it's supposed to burn down one night.
But I would think, I would think that the OEM people downstairs, I haven't asked this question, but I would think that they would have, they would be more advanced in that scenario. Because what, what if it happened in the police station?
Yeah. But yeah, but the OEM is, I think they're more focused on, well, one is that they're primary responders, police, fire, EMS, and also the safety of the town. You know, how we do business is up to us.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is how, what if the police department is quarantined? Or we lose that?
With all the mold down there now, they've been struggling with something similar to that.
I think it's time to ask the question.
Yeah.
And let's see if.
Right, is it, is a personal committee question though, or is it something that we just need to create like a task force now?
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, if, if we're going to put something in place as quickly as the virus seems to be moving, two weeks from today is.
It may be too late.
It's gonna be, yeah, it may be too late. I think we need to have a plan to come back, but understand if we have to take emergency procedures before then, that there's just going to be an executive decision that's made by Ralph.
Well, with that, certainly advice on.
Yeah, but do you, do you have, I'm assuming there's association of business administrators?
Yeah, it's accounted, yes, yeah.
I mean, is there an email sharing thing that you could ask if someone else has a policy and has already done this?
No, I'm not sure.
Not seen one that's come by yet, but, you know, we can appreciate that.
Right, but put it out there or ask the league if they have, the league of municipalities?
Oh.
Of municipalities, if there's, you know, I mean, why reinvent? Maybe somebody's already come up with something that's.
The county sheriff's department, they have a plan already too, that they share downstream.
You know, somebody must have already done this or thought of this.
Well, I'm, I'm sure we don't have to think just with inside that New Jersey, the communities in Washington State, I'm sure that have already confronted this problem.
Somebody must have a policy. Always steal somebody else's. It's always easier.
Well, maybe in your next staff meeting, you can start to, you know, solicit, solicit input. Talk to each of the departments, say, you know, what could you do? You know, if we, if Borough Hall Building, the building wasn't available for you to use, how would we complete our work?
Just reopening into public session, so we had two resolutions, do we have numbers on them?
One is twenty ninety six and the other one is twenty ninety seven.
So twenty ninety six is the attorney?
Which one, yeah, yeah.
Okay, we'll say that's because we did that first, so that's appointing Marizetti.
Yeah, we can go insert the funding address of Marizetti.
Marizetti.
Marizetti Falcone LLP in accordance with the proposal dated March fifth, twenty twenty, at the rate set forth in the proposal, which range from one hundred and twenty five dollars per hour for the first ten hours to a hundred and ninety five dollar blended rate, and the last one doesn't apply because there's no redevelopment.
Okay, so somebody want to move that?
I'll move.
If a second?
A second.
Okay, um, do we need a voice vote?
You have voice votes, fine.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, and then the next is twenty ninety what, three?
Ninety seven.
Ninety seven is for Richard Vaughn to be full time employee.
I'll move.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we took care of those two, now you want to talk about the policy on people getting sick, to make them, I know somebody just told me, Morgan Stanley, that if they go on, if they leave the country, they are automatically quarantined for, they can't come back to work for fourteen days.
Do we have a personnel committee later this?
Well, we were just talking about doing one next week, so maybe that's an item for personnel.
So maybe, yes.
We don't have a standing time for personnel meetings, that's the thing.
Right, but if we're gonna have one in the next ten days, can we bring it up in that session and then come back to the council with a
With a policy?
Proposal.
Because what I can, what I can, I've spoken, I've not spoken directly to the chief about this, but Brian and, you know, and the OEM people, and I know that, you know, I've gotten, not gotten really any, any feedback as, as to, you know, what a plan might be, but what I can tell you is that we have the capacity to work remotely, there are three people, employees right now that have their computers are set at home to work, at home, so it can, so it can be done, that I can tell them.
For those individuals.
Maybe it's not as, look, we sent out a simple email to my company this morning, if you get sick, don't come to work. You know, it doesn't, you don't have to have a Corona test device, you know, to verify that you have something bad, if you have the cold or the flu right now, those kind of symptoms, don't come on, don't come in work remotely, and that simple communication can mitigate a lot of issues.
The problem is, is you don't, and what's insidious about this virus is that you don't get symptomatic right away.
Right away.
You can go five to fourteen days before you're symptomatic, meanwhile, you're contaminating the entire building, and that's what, you know, they now have shut down Berkeley Heights and Roselle schools because a parent of one of the kids, you know, becomes sick and, or becomes exposed, and now they have to, so they have to clean the facility. So, I mean, I think it could incapacitate us, particularly, it's true that some of your employees can work from home, but some of them really have to do face to face jobs, so I think we need to have a plan.
I think we need to have a plan, I don't, I, what's the best way to do it, and when do we need it, how fast do we move on it, you know?
Can you actually?
How can anybody interact face to face if they were ill, or possibly ill, that's, I mean.
What do you mean?
But they might not know they're ill.
If they'd infected, if someone got ill and we were all here in the building, we found out tomorrow that someone was sick, so how would any of us then be allowed to work face to face with anyone?
Well, that's the whole point, you wouldn't be able to.
Okay.
Right, I think we need to figure out, like, if, if there's a, if there's a, if there's a requirement that we shut down for whatever reason, I mean, there's it's a scenario that may never happen.
Right, right, right.
What do we do in that scenario? Do we answer phones from home, do we have a message on our website that tells people what to do, you know, how do taxes get collected?
Exactly, how do taxes get collected?
Right, like, like, we need a contingency plan in the event that, we don't have to figure out what shuts us down, we say, what happens, what do we, how do we operate the borough if we're shut down? Would that be a good way to look at it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
So forget about how it happened, we just assume it might happen at some point in the future, how do we operate?
Sure, and that can be the same thing in the emergency management plan, I don't know if it's part of that, if there was another hurricane or
Well, yeah, I think the emergency management plan, at least as, as I know, as I understand it, is it's for more, it's more short, short timeframe focused, you know, we have a snowstorm, or we have some environmental thing like that, or there's flooding, it's time limited, this, the problem with this is that it's, it's an extended period of time.
It could be, I mean, supposed to borough hall burn down one night.
Well, I would think, I would think that the OEM people downstairs, and I haven't asked this question, but I would think that they would have, they would be more advanced in that scenario, because what, what if it happened in the police station?
Well, yeah, but the OEM is, I think they're more focused on, well, one is the primary responders, police, fire, EMS, and also the safety of the town, you know, how we do business is up to us.
I understand that, but what I'm saying is how, what if the police department is quarantined, whether we lose that?
With all the mold down there now, they've been struggling with something similar to that.
I, I think it's time to ask the question.
Yeah.
And let's see if
Right, is it, is a personal committee question though, or is it something that we just need to create like a task force now?
Yeah, I mean, to be honest, if, if we're going to put something in place, as quickly as this virus seems to be moving,
Yeah.
two weeks from today is
It may be too late.
It's gonna be, yeah, it may be too late, I think we need to have a, a plan to come back, but understand if we have to take emergency procedures before then, that there's just going to be an executive decision that's made by Ralph.
Well, with that, certainly advise all of you.
Yeah, but do you, do you have, I'm assuming there's association of business administrators?
Yeah, it's accounting, yes, yeah.
I mean, is there an email sharing thing that you could ask if someone else has a policy and has already done this?
No, I'm not sure when it comes, not seen one that's come by me yet, but yeah, we could initiate that.
Right, but to put it out there, or ask the league, if they have, the league?
Ask Oh.
Yeah.
Of municipalities, if there's, you know, I mean, why reinvent, maybe somebody's already come up with something that's
The county sheriff's department, they have a plan already too, that they can share downstream.
You know, somebody must have already done this or thought of this.
Well, I'm, I'm sure we don't have to think just with inside the New Jersey, there are communities in Washington State, I'm sure, that have already confronted this problem.
Somebody must have a policy, always steal somebody else's, it's always easier.
Well, maybe in your next staff meeting, you can start to, you know, solicit, solicit input, talk to each of the departments, say, you know, what could you do? You know, if we, if Borough Hall Building, the building wasn't available for you to use, how would we complete our work? You know?
Does anybody have laptops?
Sorry?
Black cups?
Not everyone, no, no, we don't, we have a few that are in use actually for that, but we certainly don't have one for our employee. And the road department certainly, you know, that's, I don't know. They have to function as an alternative site, I don't know.
Yeah.
And I guess, in other word, in public session, a parallel question is, let's just say that the school closes down, what effect does that have on our borough employees, either the police department or municipality? Because I know that there's, I mean, there's a lot more noise about this than I can handle right now about the school's closing, does that affect your team?
Well, they've actually confronted that in New York City, where they've had enough cases that they've actually discussed it, and the decision was made that they can't close down seven hundred, I think they have something like seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand students, because who's gonna take care of, everybody would have to sign out from work, so they, they've considered closing schools a last resort. We're not necessarily like New York City, but, you know, that's a, that's a real possibility.
It's a possibility, and I think that probably our threshold may, well, I'm not even speculating.
Our threshold will be lower, but you could say.
I, I think our threshold will be lower based on our demographic.
Exactly.
Okay, recording?
Yep.
It's not really quarter after nine, it's quarter after ten.
I need to change the clock.
Yes.
Oh, here I thought nine fifteen. How hard will it be to get the clock changed? We did a resolution.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, we have a second?
Send me, send it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.